I call this meeting of the Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is closed session. The recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees and matter pertaining to an individual student. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay, is there any discussion? Roll call, please. Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye.
I'd like to call, I'd like to call our meeting to order. The Board of Education return to open session at 7:30. May I have a roll call, please? Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavell.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye, or here.
Mr. Dombrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here.
Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I will have to ask the audience to please keep your voices down so we can conduct our meeting, so we can recognize our award winners, our students, and that we can conduct board business. We welcome our public comments, but please let us get started with our meeting. Thank you. All right, our first item is the state award winners, and I'll turn that over to Dr. Small.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to introduce our Director of Athletics and Activities, Eric Winkowski, so we can honor some great student athletes tonight.
Board of Education and Dr. Small, thank you for taking some time to honor some fabulous athletes from three of our schools tonight. Students, as your sponsor introduces you, please walk forward and receive your award and stand here next to the podium. Additionally, I'm going to ask that any family members that are here with their athletes to stand at the time that they're introduced so that we can recognize you. Helping me present students tonight are Palatine Principal Tony Medina and from Principal Mark Langer. So we'll get started with Hoffman Estates Gymnastics, David Kalish. David has been an English teacher and gymnastics coach at Hoffman Estates High School since 1996. He's very active in the Illinois High School Gymnastics Coaches Association, and has been instrumental in the hosting of the Boys IHSA State Gymnastics Competition at Hoffman Estates High School the last three years. And what this means is that both the boys' and the girls' gymnastics state championships are hosted at a District 211 school. David?
I'd like to introduce Alex Orwakowitz, state finalist on high bar, fifth place finish. They say the key to being a good athlete is repetition and consistency, and over the last couple of years, we've had anything but consistency, and it's been difficult for all of us to work through. Alex did work through that. He qualified for the state meet on every event, was a state finalist on vault and high bar, ended up with a fifth place finish on high bar. We're really proud of that, but we really appreciate Alex for the example that he sets in the gym for all our gymnasts, the dedication that he has to our program and to gymnastics in general, and for the love that he has for all his teammates. And so we want to congratulate Alex on his excellent finish and wish him all the best moving forward from this year.
All right, next I'll introduce Jeff Williams. Jeff is a school psychologist and has been the head boys' track and field coach at Fromm High School for the past four seasons. In that time, Fromm has won a sectional championship, produced a state champion, has had several state medalists and qualifiers, and he's here to talk about one tonight.
Thank you very much for providing us the time here today and recognizing our student athletes. I'd like to call up Will Stewart, who is here with his mom, Kristen Stewart. Will Stewart qualified for the state meet in both the 100 and 200 meter dash and had a very gigantic personal best in the 100 meter dash downstate, earning a seventh-place medal. He was really a leader and captain for our team. Obviously, this year, as mentioned, came with a lot of challenges, and his leadership was second to none. We really appreciate the opportunity to participate in athletics. And the moment that I have walking away is seeing his face as he exited the gates at Eastern Illinois after such an accomplishment is what athletics is truly all about, to see how much sacrifice and hard work he put in, made that look on his face all the while. I know that he has big things ahead, both athletically and academically, next year, and will be one of the captains of our team. So, Will, congratulations, and thank you so much, and thank you for your time.
Next, we have John Nally. John Nally is a math teacher, football coach, and track coach at Palatine High School with 33 years of coaching experience at Palatine High School. John has just completed his 29th season as the head boys' track and field coach. John?
Thank you to the Board of Education and Administration for honoring these student athletes in their accomplishments, both in the classroom and in athletics. I get the pleasure of introducing Dominic Ball. I'd like to thank Dominic's parents, who are unable to be in attendance, but also his sister Anya, who you'll meet in a second, for instilling that competitive spirit and also getting Dominic introduced to the sport of track and field before he entered high school. In addition, there was one other coach that worked with Dominic, and that was Coach Chuck Reed, who worked with our long jumpers. I'd like to thank him as well. But Dominic just completed his freshman season with an eighth-place finish at the state track meet in the long jump. Dominic's long jump was, he was also the sectional champion. Dominic was also a three-event winner at the conference meet, winning the long jump in 22 feet, six and a half inches, which set our freshman record and our frost soft record and ranked number four all-time at PHS. He also, he also won the 100 in a great time of 10.96, which is also a freshman record, a frost soft school record, and ranks number five all-time. And he also won the 200 in a time of 22.45, which is a freshman record. And so Dominic had quite an accomplishment. I get to see Dominic on a daily basis because I coach football. He's, he started as a running back his freshman year, so we're excited about the next couple of years for Dominic. And so I'd like to introduce our team MVP and eighth-place state medalist, Dominic Ball.
All right, and finally, we have Ruth Spethman. Ruth is a special education teacher at Palatine and has a girls' track and, has been the head girls' track and field coach for the past five years. I'm sorry, a track and field coach for the last five years. This is her first year as a head coach. And Ruth is also a proud District 211 graduate. Ruth?
I would like to present Anya Ball. So Anya is not here with her parents today, but like we heard, Anya is here with her very talented younger brother, and Anya is just as talented. She was a 2021 graduate and a four-year varsity track and field athlete for Palatine. She placed eighth in the high jump at the state meet mid-June. Additionally, Anya placed first place in high jump and fourth place in long jump at the IHSA sectional meet, helping us win a first-place team trophy, which during a COVID season is pretty remarkable. She also earned all-conference honors, placing third in the high jump at our conference meet. Her high school competition personal record of five feet and four inches places her fourth all-time on our school history list. Congratulations, Anya.
Well, Scott Hagel, please step forward to the podium. It is my pleasure to introduce you to Palatine High School Gymnastics Coach Scott Hagel, who is named the 2021 Boys Gymnastics Coach of the Year by the Illinois School Gymnastics Coaches Association. Scott has coached gymnastics at Palatine High School for 22 years, during which he has amassed an impressive record of 159 wins with only 27 losses. On top of that impressive record, Scott has led his teams to an amazing collection of titles, including 11 Midsuburban League West titles, eight Midsuburban League championships, eight sectional championships, eight state final appearances. And in those state championship appearances, Palatine has placed third in 2008 and in 2021, and claimed a state championship in 2007. In 2018, Scott was also inducted into the Illinois High School Gymnastics Coaches Association's Hall of Fame. Scott, thank you for your dedication to our student athletes at Palatine High School, and congratulations, and if you'll come forward for your certificate. William Fromm High School, 2021 graduate, Pavon Pandaranji, has been selected as the 2021 Presidential Scholar by the President's Special Commission. The United States Presidential Scholarship Program was established in 1964 in order to recognize some of the nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors. Each year, up to 161 student names are named as our Presidential Scholars. It is one of the country's highest honors for our high school students. Each scholar is chosen by their leadership, scholarship, contribution to school and community, exceptional talent in the visual, creative, and performing arts, or ability and accomplishment in career and technical educational fields. Pavon has been invited this evening to receive this board recognition and has invited William Fromm High School mathematics teacher Shannon Denne to present him to us. Mrs. Denne?
Thank you, Dr. Small. Tonight, we have Pavon's, or Pavon, my goodness, I'm so nervous. Pavon's parents, Sima and Vajakesh, I'm here to help us honor him. So I've had the pleasure of working with Pavon for the last three years as his computer science teacher. He started out with me in my AP Java class, and then I worked as his mentor and advisor for two years in independent study, computer science. Throughout that time, he wanted to, he wanted to do something big, and he approached me with the idea of using machine learning and AI and all types of algorithms and crazy things that you never hear about in high school learning, as a way to help treat malaria and diagnose malaria. And I'm thinking, wow, he's, he's really, you know, reaching big. And, and I thought, okay, let's look into it, let's see what you can do. And he, and he did the research, and he, and, and he went after it, and he went after it big. And after, after two years of working and researching, he has developed a mask R-CNN algorithm that can diagnose malaria through images. He has worked with doctors and scientists around the country, at other universities, in Uganda. He has been working with people around the world to help perfect his algorithm. Is it perfect? Not yet. Has it improved? Absolutely. And, and his goal is to bring technology to places that don't have accessibility to it the way that they should. And, and I think that's just one quality that makes this incredibly brilliant student so remarkable, is that he wants to take his skills and his gifts to help affect change throughout the world and not just become rich. So if you, if you knew Pavon, you would know that he is one of the kindest, most humble, most amazing students, and, and every teacher who has ever taught him, every student who has ever known him, I honestly, I can't think of a single teacher, student, peer, anybody who could say a single bad thing about him. He really, he really is the real deal. And, and yeah, I've, I'm just, I'm so proud to have worked with him. And, and just, you know, even during COVID, when everything was shut down and he couldn't get to his lab, he set up a GoFundMe to raise money so he could get lab technology in his home so he could continue his research. Who does this? Pavon does, right? I mean, this kid's amazing. So it doesn't surprise me one bit that he was selected to be a Presidential Scholar, nor that he's going to Harvard in the fall, nor that he will be continuing his research. And, and one day, you will, you will see his name many times over, I guarantee it. So, thank you, Pavon. We are so.
Congratulations. Thank you. Pictures, yes. Are we going to take pictures now? Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. We are going to take pictures of, of our students, so we'll need a couple of minutes to be able to do that, and then we will continue along with our meeting. Ladies, gentlemen, we've taken the pictures with our students. We're back. And our next item of business is public comments and hearings. The first on the agenda is the Palatine Township and the Women's Club of Inverness donations. And we have, from Palatine Township, Andy John Calcunis, who's our township supervisor, and Jean DeFranco from the League of Women Voters is here.
Jennifer, yes.
Jennifer.
Jennifer.
Jennifer, okay. Thank you.
Oh, no, go, you've got your comments. You're good.
Well, first of all, thank you very much, everyone, and congratulations to the newly-elected board members. We're here for some more good news. This is a great start to an exciting night, and we know a little bit about exciting nights at the township, so you're not alone. Board of Education President Anna Klimerwitz, is that how you pronounce it? I hope. Superintendent Dr. Lisa Small, and distinguished board members of the school board. As the new supervisor of Palatine Township, Andy John Calcunos is my name. I appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. The township government is really the closest to the people and provides social services to eight municipalities in the area. Townships help low-income residents, seniors, and people with disabilities live successfully within the community. We provide with our food pantry, transportation, and our outreach programs to our neighborhoods that help everyone. Our Apple Tree program assists children in need, from kindergarten to ninth grade. We provide much-needed school supplies and donated food and so forth. So what we would like to do is help connect people with the people that can contribute. Our main purpose with Apple Tree is to help children in the township flourish and succeed. We're all excited to see that happening tonight. Palatine Township's Apple Tree program has been helping children in the District 15 and 211 schools for 33 years. We're able to do this with the generous support of the community and community organizations like the Inverness Women's Club. We're fortunate to have generous partners like them and others. President Jen DeFranco, this organization is close to my heart because I grew up in Inverness, and I'm aware of their good work. We've had a great partner with the Women's Club here at the township, and they've been generous donors for decades to the Apple Tree program. Since 15, 2015, those grants have been matched by Palatine Township and have been earmarked to cover the costs for insurance, for the iPads, and so forth. So we received a grant from the Women's Club of Inverness in the amount of $1,180, and we're thrilled to match that amount. And so tonight, we're here to present to you a check for $2,360 to help our children in our high schools and students in our township. So a little bit more background is that there's 725 students with school supplies that were helped just last year alone. In Palatine Township, there's 400 families every single month that have food scarcity and have needs for food pantry services, right in our backyard. It's breathtaking. So these organizations are a big part of our community, and we're grateful to have Jennifer and her organization and so many of these civic groups in our community. And we want to remind everyone that we're neighbors, and the township is your partner, and how we treat each other is important, and the township's here for you. If you want to get involved, for those audience members, or contribute, you can visit our website and Facebook pages for updates, but these platforms will be updated real soon for some really exciting news. And I'd like to present the check to you. If you, please share a few words about what you, what you're all doing at the, at the Women's Club.
So newly-elected, so, yeah, thanks. No, the Women's Club has been around for generations, and they've been providing community support to multiple organizations throughout the communities of Palatine, Inverness, Arlington Heights, and the area. So, but yeah, we were just really fortunate to be able to have funds this year to actually give away. As we all know, COVID years are strange, so yeah, fundraising was hard, but this seemed to be one of the needs that we found to be important enough to continue to find some funds for. So we were very happy to be able to do that, so we're glad to see it is going to good use.
Thank you very much. It's truly appreciated. I know you have helped us for the last couple of years, and especially with the technology and the iPads and helping provide some of the insurance coverage for it. I mean, it's, it's become a tool, and it, especially this past year, it's been a very valuable tool for all of our students. So again, thank you so much for your continued support and being able to work together and community involvement. Thank you very much.
Very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations to the students as well.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we'll move on to public comments. I do have the, the sign-in sheet, so hopefully everyone has signed in. We do have over 20 names. We will be doing it at three minutes per individual. At the end, I will see if there's anyone else that would like to address the board. The board welcomes you, and we're pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium, so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you might state if you are a resident of the district. The time that we will have is three minutes per individual, and at one hour of speaking, we'll reevaluate to see how many we have left. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teniper. Mr. Schumacher. Mr. Schumacher. All right. Let us begin then. The first name that I have is Joanna Pazdal. Please come to the floor. I am going to ask that in order for us to be able to get through all the names and to be able to have time for others over the 20, please hold the applause, the booing, the cheering, any of those things, so we can hear everyone. Yes, please use the podium to address the, the board.
Hello, everybody. I'm Joanna Pazdal, and I'm a family practice physician, and my practice is located in South Barrington, Illinois, so close. I have my own practice, not working for anybody else, so I don't have my, like a director. So I would like to address the issue that students should not wear a mask at school at all.
Again, I'm going to ask, please, please refrain.
The reasoning is very simple. The students are in the low-risk range. They do not get sick as easily as like older people, although for the older people, statistics are also saying that, you know, the deaths are not really as they presented to us in lots of media. As a physician, I did not see any of my young patients being sick to COVID. They did not test it to COVID at all. And in my older patients, did not get sick. I had, my population's like 400 patients because I have like a small direct primary care practice, which is totally different than insurance-based practices. So I had maybe five cases of COVID, maybe one patient was in the hospital because of the low oxygen. Other patients are safely managed at home with antibiotic and steroids. None of the kids, I repeat, were sick. And also, I don't believe the COVID infection is so severe as they speak in a social media, in TV, radio, just regular social media and radio or TV. Because, you know, I have contact with those patients recently.
You have one minute remaining.
Okay. Recently, I had two patients of COVID-infected patients in my office. They did not wear masks. I did not have a mask. I didn't get sick. So that's the proof that the COVID infection is not so severe. I understand that some people are getting sick, but they're getting sick also because of the flu, because of the other issues. And the kids wearing masks are, are at risk for anxieties and for other chronic diseases. So that's, that's my point. No mask for kids as a physician.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next. I'd really like to be able to make sure we hear everyone. Please refrain. I'm going to call two names. The first one is Maya Zimmer, and she'll be speaking at the podium. And then in the wings will be Dee Pritchard. So Maya?
Hello, my name is Maya Zimmer, and I'm a current student at Fremd High School. I'm here today with March for Our Lives Palatine because I'm deeply concerned about D-211's response to the mental health crisis in this community. While I felt supported by many individual teachers and staff members, the general culture from the district and my school itself has felt at best disconnected and at worst completely dismissive. The severity of this issue can no longer be an elephant in the room, because students deserve to feel comfortable, safe, and supported. We deserve more mental health awareness and resources informed by our actual needs, instead of outreach that lacks complexity or health class slideshows that fill some sort of curriculum quota. We deserve a learning environment without fear of police presence, where every student feels seen and supported by counselors, psychologists, and social workers when necessary. I'm not suggesting that ending this crisis is easy, but I am demanding that we do everything that we can, so please consider my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Dee Pritchard. After Dee Pritchard, it will be Ojas Bombry. I hope I pronounced that name right. Mr. Pritchard?
I'm Dave Pritchard, a nearly 35-year Palatine resident who has paid upwards of $200,000 of property taxes to date, which is very painful in a state as corrupt and bankrupt as Illinois. My question tonight of the board is one of, do you know what the 14th Amendment is and why it's important? I don't know if District 211 is still teaching accurate American history, or has morphed over to critical race theory, or a combination of both, but regardless, I'd like to read Section 1 of that amendment to the board. All persons born or naturalized in the United States and subject to the jurisdiction thereof are citizens of the U.S. and of the state wherein they reside. No state shall make or enforce any law which shall abridge the privileges or immunities of citizens of the U.S., nor shall any state deprive any person of life, liberty, or property without due process of law, nor deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of the laws. This amendment was used by the United States Supreme Court to end school segregation decades ago. It seems to me that you and your fellow teachers' union and state education bosses who claim to follow the science have forgotten that lesson. During the past year, I would suggest that you have deprived D-211 students their liberty and their access to taxpayer-provided education that they not only have a right to, but are legally bound to receive. As the American Institute of Action notes, today, school boards are segregating students because they have not proved they took an experimental vaccine that has not, I repeat, has not been approved by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration.
You have one minute remaining.
Pardon me?
You have one minute remaining.
The segregation is happening despite children having extremely low risk of contracting the Fauci virus and an overwhelmingly recovery rate of more than 99%. I have a lot more to say, but I thought I was speaking five minutes, but I'm not. So I will quote briefly from an article this week in a left-leaning magazine, which says the kids are safe, they always have been. According to the CDC, among children, the mortality risk from the virus is actually lower than that from the flu. The risk of severe disease or hospitalization is about the same. Most remarkably, it has been known to be true since the very earliest days of the pandemic. The kids are not at risk themselves and never were. And this is quoted from the New Yorker magazine, hardly a conservative magazine. So in conclusion, please do not embarrass, frustrate, or anger District 211 parents and taxpayers any longer. You have the autonomy to act. Your omniscient authorities have left this in your laps. Unmask our kids and stop the separation and the shame.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ojas, and I'm a former student at William Fremd High School. I'm here today because I'm tired of the negligence towards mental health in our district, and I want to see change for future students. During my four years at Fremd, I've been a part of a community still reeling from the death of three students lost to suicide. I've been a witness to my peers struggling with mental health to the extent that they were not able to function in the learning environment, and I've dealt with my own mental health issues, sought help from Student Services, and been unsatisfied. My academic counselor is a compassionate, caring, and helpful person. So are the Fremd school psychologists, but there are simply not enough of people like them to deal with the sheer amount of students in our schools. My friends and I have had nobody to talk to on several occasions when dealing with panic attacks during the school day or an unresolved crisis. We've also had trouble relating to the predominantly white staff that may not be able to understand our culturally-based or race-based problems. We are tired of being turned down simply because the resources we have are insufficient. We need clinical social workers and mental health personnel of color in our schools to prevent crises from happening in the first place. And part of this preventative action has to come from the end of the police consultant program. This is not to say that any individual cop should be vilified. This is about a system D-211 perpetuates, one where students, especially Black, Latina, and low-income students, can get arrested in schools, one where cops are empowered by an unequal justice system. According to the ACLU, children that interact with law enforcement at a young age are statistically more likely to end up incarcerated later on in their lifetimes. Additionally, even with 20,000 school resource officers stationed across the U.S., there is no significant evidence that police in schools increase public safety or prevent violence. D-211 has to stop contributing to the school-to-prison pipeline. Our students deserve care in their schools, not discrimination and criminalization.
You have one minute remaining.
D-211 has to stop contributing to the school-to-prison pipeline. Our students deserve care in their schools, not punishment and criminalization. They deserve resources that prevent them from violating the law in the first place, and counselors that can address some of the root causes of mental health issues, an unstable home life, poverty, or race-based trauma. We need you to send our kids on a pathway to graduation, not prison. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Bailey McCarthy, and after Bailey is Sarah Fallon. Okay, Bailey, your time starts.
Hi, my name is Bailey McCarthy, and I'm a student at Fremd High School. I'm here because I believe we should put an end to the police consultant program in D-211 schools. I could talk about my experiences from the last three years in high school, but I'm going to talk about today. Earlier today, my friends here were belittled by an adult when they tried to share their experiences with their mental health. Everyone is allowed to share their opinions, that's why we're here, but when a faculty member is supposed to be making decisions for students and caring for students and ends up causing harm to them, there's obviously an issue in the system that we have. Now that faculty member was not completely qualified to handle students with mental health issues, they were not a counselor. Police officers, while they have a specific duty to the public, are not qualified to handle students with mental health issues either. Having someone unqualified handle students' mental health is dangerous and creates an incredibly unhealthy environment in our school system. I'm nervous for the future of our schools because the students are unhappy and scared, and they need guidance from those who aren't going to punish them. I believe the district should end the police consultant program and instead add more counselors to the faculty across D-211. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sarah Fallon. After Sarah is Samantha, I believe, Nelson.
Hi, I'm Sarah Fallon. I'm a Palatine resident, and I just want to thank you for all of the time and consideration that you've given to the situation with masks, and I know it's difficult. I know you're facing a lot of pressure from the community. I liked what our township supervisor said a little while ago about the fact that we're all neighbors. It doesn't feel like we're neighbors in here right now. The whipping and yelling and cheering and jeering that I'm hearing as people speak, this doesn't feel neighborly. I wish it did. I wish it felt like we were all on the same team. I wish it felt like we all cared about each other and that we were all in this together. Instead, it feels threatening.
Okay, I really need the whispering to step back there. That's really very rude of people. Please listen.
I hope that we can find a way to come together and do what's best for everyone, our students, our families, without all of this contentiousness. Thank you.
Thank you. Samantha Nelson, and I believe after that is Susan Goldwater.
Hello, my name is Samantha Nelson. I'm a D-211 resident, a Fremd alumni, and a parent to a Fremd alumni. I'm here to ask the board to continue to follow science and uphold the recommendations made by the CDC and the State Board of Education for masking guidelines in fall. I'm a resident of Rolling Meadows, where I moved there in order to provide better education for my daughter to be in District in Fremd. I live in apartment complexes where there's many people, there's many people who are single-family households, are single-parent households, many people who live in a household, people who are struggling, people who are struggling with food insecurity. Just in fact, before I came here, there was a food pantry truck distributing food in front of my apartment. So I'm asking you to please consider those people when you think about removing masks. Those kids were back and forth. I'm privileged, I was able to work from home. Those kids were back and forth, back and forth with e-learning. They struggled, their parents lost jobs, I saw people die of COVID, I saw people just struggling to make ends meet. Not all of us have, you know, expendable income to be able to do those things, so I'm asking you to keep the masks on so we can protect our families and protect ourselves and make sure, you know, that we're still alive and we're still around and our kids can, you know, be educated. Last I heard, we just put, there's like 45 states where the Delta variant is surging, and we just put some states on our restriction list because cases are surging there. From what I read, and I just read this today, there are seven cases in Mississippi of people, or the children actually, who are in ICU. Two of them are on ventilators. And then also in Arkansas, I read an article about a child who has the Delta variant. She has also been in ICU for 12 days.
You have one minute remaining.
Sorry, 12 days and been on a ventilator as well. So I'm just asking you to think about things and consider protecting children by upholding the masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Susan Goldwater, followed by David Quimick.
Hi, I had a, I'm Susan Goldwater. I had a speech prepared, but I'm going to change it a little bit based on what I just heard. First of all, I am 100% against defunding police in our schools. My son, I had to reach out to the school resource officer last year at his high school because he was being online groomed, and he needed to have an adult mentor who he could speak to and get some understanding that what was happening online was wrong. And I am very uncomfortable putting this out there publicly, but I really feel that this board should understand that there is a place for our school resource officers. And I'm sorry you're having bad experience, but maybe there's just a matter of adjusting how you interact, how they interact. But to get rid of them, I am totally against that. As far as the masking, I am totally against having students being segregated about whether they wear masks or not, and they absolutely should go to school without masks on. The social, emotional harm being done to our children by not being able to be together with their peers, not being able to see each other's emotions and facial expressions, not being able to hug each a friend in need or give a high five when somebody did something good. They've been locked up in their rooms all year. They are, especially in this day and age of electronics and social media, they need to be in school and understand how to be around people. I am not going to read my entire speech. I think enough people here are going to say the same thing that I did. I was going to quote the New York Magazine article as well, where 339 children unfortunately did die of COVID. However, when you take into account 39,000 children die of other things throughout the year.
You have one minute remaining.
That is a very small minority of children that have passed from this disease. It is not worth the danger that it is doing to their emotional and mental health. Thank you.
Thank you. David, David Quimick, and then, David Quimick, and then John Cushing afterwards.
Hi, my name is David, and I've lived in Schaumburg for about 12 years. I like how the district prospers and everything, but during the last year, everything has been crazy, and I think that the kids shouldn't be wearing masks or make it at least optional as their death with them is, I mean, on kids is minimal. I don't think there was any even death on the kids anywhere in the United States. So I'd like to say that I'm, we are against it, and we won't allow it. We are, we have a really good Polish group, and we're very organized, and we're going to fight it till you guys make it where it's optional or no mask at all. Thank you.
John Cushing. John Cushing, and then after John, it looks like Nancy, N-A-N, I think C-Y. Mr. Cushing.
Hi, my name's John Cushing. I've been in the district almost my whole life. I-
Could you speak in the microphone, please?
I already, I graduated from Palatine High School, so my wife graduated from Fremd, and so are both my kids. I still have one that's at Fremd right now. Mine is about the mask mandate. First of all, I was at the Barrington School District Board two days ago about this same type of argument that's going on right now, all right? The smaller kids, the K through 5 kids, are very, very, are between .0 to .025 going to be able to get this virus, okay, or have any kind of impact where it might kill them, okay? They can catch it, yes, but it's not going to kill them, okay? That's been proven by the CDC, has had all their guidelines and all the rest of that stuff. Nobody's following the science either, okay? The science sits there and says that, you know, to wear masks. Then they say we have, we don't have to go ahead and not have masks now. For the past two months, everybody's been at football games, basketball games, outdoors, doing all their stuff, baseball games, and all these small kids that were in high school or grade school or whatever have all been exposed to all this stuff. Now, tell me, why are you going to mask kids now when for the past summer, they've been off without any masks, going around to all these, these big events and not having any masks? It doesn't make sense to me. It's not, I'm not, people that want to wear masks can go ahead and wear masks. If they feel that, you know, that's going to protect them, that's fine, okay? There was a German survey that basically said that masks don't work unless you're wearing the N95 masks.
You have one minute remaining.
If you're wearing an N95 mask, you're fine. If you're wearing cloth masks, they said that the droplets can still get through, okay? Now, as, as much as I'd like to sit there and say, well, you know, which ones do or don't work, that's fine, but those N95s, probably no people are wearing the N95 masks that are going to protect you that way. Plus, you guys are still holding on to masks, you're pulling them down, you're eating, and then you're putting them back on. Plus, when you guys wear it for more than three minutes, they say that you have problems breathing because of all the carbon dioxide that gets emitted from your own breath that you're getting back into your own system again, okay? So you can't tell me that this is going to be good for little kids that are running around and they're getting, they're hyperventilating into some of these masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a Nancy who's signed in? And then after Nancy is Tom Schwartz. Schwartz.
Good evening. I'm Nancy, and I'm a mother of two in this district, 211.
Good evening. I'm Nancy, and I'm a mother of two in this district, 211. What John said, that's pretty much half my speech. But that's exactly right. We've been open all summer. Illinois has been open, our kids have been running around, they've been playing sports, they've been going to, we've been going grocery shopping, they're outside with their friends. And to ask them to walk right back into school to put masks on is a little bit ridiculous. What's, I don't understand what the point is. And since our children are at the lowest risk based on CDC guidelines, I don't understand why we are having all these, why we would have a mask mandate. The COVID, the death rate of the COVID in this, in the, in the ages of 5 to 18, like we had said, were very low. In the previous seasons for flu, 2018 to 19, there was 477 deaths across the United States. H1N1 produced between 800 and 1,000 children. None of the mitigations that we have now were ever put into place. I don't understand why we're, why we have them now. Just recently, once again, JAMA put out a journal, or an article, basically about the dangerous pathogens and significant bacteria growth, and concluded that masks, the masking retained a toxic level of CO2 in as little as three minutes. That's, now you're asking kids to be in school for eight hours. This is ridiculous. And then nobody wants to have their kids having these, having this bacteria come back into their faces and breathing it back in. It's very, very unhealthy. And you're going to hear a lot of statistics tonight, and I don't want to keep going on about that, but whether our children are vaccinated, whether they are not vaccinated, masks should be optional. There should not be any discrimination against anyone who chooses to wear a mask or not wear a mask.
You have one minute remaining.
Whether they receive a vaccination or they don't receive a vaccination, before we judge, we should remember that our circumstances, your circumstances, they're all different. And we, we live in a free country. We are free to choose what we do with our body. And so it, I don't want to see any judgments. I want our kids to go to school in peace and to have a fun life like they're supposed to have in school. You guys were all elected to our board to represent the children in this community. And I would hope that you would honor that position that has been bestowed on you by putting our children and their well-being first. This isn't about you. Don't dare to continue to make our children pawns in the political game that has erupted over the last year. Once again, this is about them, their mental health, and their scholastic success. Join, join the rest of the 40 states that have already gone away with mask mandates and all the other Illinois districts, and let's get rid of the mask mandate in our district.
Tom Schwartz, and after Tom is Adam. There's Tom Schwartz, and then after Mr. Schwartz is just the name Adam.
Hi, I'm Tom Schwartz. Been living in Palatine with my wife for 18 years. I've got a kid in 211. I've got two in District 15. And provided we're still there when they get to high school, they'll be going to 211 as well. So I got skin in the game. I was going to go into the definition of emergency use authorization. That's what the vaccines are operating under right now. And the concept is you let go of, you know, the rigorous testing and the long-term stuff that would normally happen to actually prove that these things are safe. I'm going to skip all that because the danger from the disease and not having a treatment, et cetera, far outweighs the dangers that vaccines can cause. So that makes sense, but for 18 and under, statistically, I mean, kids die, but more kids die in school bus accidents, we're not stopping that. Statistically, the chance is nil that they will die from it. So therefore, the justification to give vaccines to them based on EUA is gone. It's not there. And if you're going to then say you can go to school and not have to mask if you're vaccinated with this thing which you shouldn't be giving to kids, I mean, the World Health Organization has even said the myocarditis that's going on is risky, and maybe we should pause and look at this. So it's driving me a little nuts here that we have people dictating that you should get vaccinated when it doesn't really apply. There's no mention of people who've recovered from COVID. You're immune then. The CDC doesn't recognize that, but the National Institutes of Health put a study out in December showing you got at least eight months' worth of immunity, if not lifetime. So we're forgetting all that stuff, and we're forcing kids to have masks on. And now we're talking about mental health. Well, masks, they stop spittle if you're Dustin Hoffman, you know, and spit when you speak. And let's see, what else do they do that's good?
You have one minute remaining.
That's about it. So what they can do though, they have a big effect, is they prevent you from being able to breathe properly. They get your glasses to fog up if you're wearing them. They get you impossible sometimes to understand somebody when they're speaking through it. They increase fear, increase anxiety, increase the suicide rate. The anxiety that kids are under, the fear they're under of a virus that has pretty much no effect on them is insane, and that's causing mental health issues. And I think we should, if we're in the United States of America, it's a free country. If you want to wear a mask, great. If you don't want to wear a mask, great. If you're, if you feel like you're at risk and you think the vaccine will fix, take the vaccine. If you don't want to take the, exercise your God-given rights to take care of yourself the way you want. The US. We're not Canada, we're not the Soviet Union. People should be able to take responsibility for their own health and go that way. And also, keep up on the vitamin D. That keeps you healthy. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, is there an Adam? Okay, is there a gentleman by the name of Adam? Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, sirs and maams. Now, I just addressed you as respectfully as I know how. When I grew up, it was common courtesy to say yes ma'am to a woman, yes sir to a man, and generally respect my elders. Nowadays, our children are being taught very confusing and just plain incorrect lessons, and in the process, have lost a great deal of respect for their fellow human beings and their elders, for sure. Let me straighten out a couple of things for all of you if you're still confused. I have a great, on great authority from the Bible that God, He made them male and female, okay? It doesn't say anything about pansexual, non-binary, gender fluid. I don't even know what the hell that means. And I bet a lot of you don't know what the hell that means, right? Raise your hand, know what that means. I have no idea. We weren't taught that stuff. That's crazy. The young kids. That's because you, that's the point. Because you guys are teaching this weird stuff that doesn't make any, any sense. Because, I'll tell you why. You can't tell somebody what gender they are or whatever by how one feels at that particular moment, and that's what you're teaching. I may be male right now, I may be female another second later. You can't address a person correctly or respectfully if you don't know. I'm going to teach my kids the way I grew up, the way we grew up in America, to be respectful to our elders. Say yes ma'am, yes sir. Hold a door for a woman. That's the way you're supposed to do it. Now, I can go with your terminologies, go excuse me they, or good morning them, or pardon me it. I did not know how you, how you identify today. Please forgive me. I'll try harder next time to call you by your made-up identity that no one could possibly know by looking at you.
You have one minute remaining.
This is confusing and tearing up the morals and values of children today. It's no wonder so many kids are on antidepressants and anti-anxiety medications. Now, why I'm on the topic of sex is, let me speak about the ridiculous sex education that you're proposing to teach my children. First of all, I do not relinquish my parental responsibility to you as educators, to have free rein to teach whatever you decide is age-appropriate for my children. Let me remind you how this works. We're the parents and have the responsibility to protect our children and guide you, the educators, on what is age-appropriate for our children to learn, especially when it comes to sexuality and sex education. Now, the Chicago Public School Board has adopted the most ridiculous and offensive sex education standards I've ever heard. They want to teach sixth graders how to use a female condom to have safe anal sex between boys. My first thought is what the hell's the matter with these sickos? Second, where are the parents who voted to have their innocent children taught this? I bet they weren't even asked.
Your speaking time is over.
How many parents would vote for that?
Mr. Adam?
Raise your hand.
Adam, your time is up, please. Thank you. Your time is up.
That's the point. That's the point.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Alright, next, next. Next is Jennifer, and after Jennifer is Rachel Rogers.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer, and I'm a registered nurse. I hold a bachelor's, a science, and nursing degree and spent 10 years as a pediatric nurse in an office setting. I have two children in District 211, and I'm speaking on behalf of them and all the children that do not want to wear a mask in school from this point forward. Tonight, I will provide evidence that face masks do not prevent the transmission of COVID and why they do more harm than good. I have pulled this information from medical journals and statements from the medical community, and I have a bibliography on the sources that I've taken my information from. According to an article published in 2020 in the Journal of the American Medical Association, the SARS-CoV-2 virus has a 1,000 times smaller diameter compared to the diameter of the threads of a cloth or surgical face mask. Due to the difference in sizes between the SARS-CoV-2 virus diameter and a face mask's thread diameter, SARS-CoV-2 can easily pass through any face mask. Several studies, either randomized, controlled trials, or meta-analysis, have proven this exact statement. In fact, after reviewing all of the studies worldwide, the CDC found, quote, "no reduction in viral transmission with the use of face masks." There are physiological and psychological effects to wearing face masks. So let's start with the physiological ones. Wearing a face mask restricts breathing by increasing the resistance of air movement during both inhalation and exhalation. Any trapped air remaining between the mouth, nose, and face mask is rebreathed repeatedly in and out of the body. This air contains low oxygen and high carbon dioxide concentrations. Low oxygen content causes serious heart diseases, dizziness, low blood pressure, and fainting. Breathing through face masks also increases temperature and humidity in the space between the mouth and the mask, which is a perfect breeding ground for bacteria. Self-contamination of the face mask due to touching the mask when wet soil damaged can lead to facial skin lesions, irritant dermatitis, or worsening acne. Furthermore, low oxygen and high carbon dioxide levels knock the body out of balance and can cause headaches, fatigue, stomach issues, muscle tension, mood disturbances, and insomnia. Any of these sound familiar to any of the complaints that any student that the school nurse saw or the student's parents or legal guardians expressed that their students complained of? Moving on to psychological effects, well, we all know what people have said. Of course, it increases the amount of anxiety and suicide is all associated with social isolation and loneliness. Humans connect through facial expression, and that is compromise when one wears a face mask. One's identity is practically eliminated when wearing a face mask, and social connections and relationships are basic human needs which are innately inherited in all people. The power to determine face covering protocols has been handed over to the school boards in Illinois. Let me remind each and every one of you, you have been elected to represent us and therefore do not have sole autonomy on the decision-making process. As a nurse who holds a professional license, I believe students have the right to bodily autonomy, a right to a healthy immune system, and their right to refuse a product that explicitly does not prevent the transmission of the SARS-CoV-2 virus. We need to start listening to the actual science instead of the scientists who choose not to follow it. Thank you.
Your time is up. Thank you. Ms. Rogers? And the next after Ms. Rogers is Sharon Keller?
Hi, I have a son at Fremd High School. I am here to say mask-wearing in schools should be optional for all students. The CDC no longer supports the notion that children have to be masked. Don't go against the CDC recommendation. For the last year, we've been told, listen to the CDC. We want you now to listen to the CDC with regards to this mask mandate. Masks in school should be optional. The guidance from the CDC does not say masks are required. The CDC says masks are recommended for those who are not vaccinated. Forcing a student who is not vaccinated to wear a mask in school is putting their medical history on their face. This is a violation of federal law. Governments can't treat people differently based on their medical condition. This is branding teens by their medical decision. Everyone who is at risk of catching COVID has access to the vaccine. Children and teens are not at risk from this virus. Mask mandates in children and teens are unethical. First, there's no evidence of benefits to masking teens. Second, we have a COVID vaccine available for anyone who's at high risk, like adults. Third, there is potentially emotional harm to students who have to mask. Fourth, children and teens have low disease risk, minuscule mortality risk, and do not transmit this disease hardly at all. Again, there's a COVID vaccine for adults should they want one. Kids should not be forced to wear masks in school. Masks should be optional. I'm standing up for all the kids, kids that are vaccinated and kids who are not vaccinated.
You have one minute remaining.
Again, mask-wearing at school should be optional for everyone. Thank you.
Sharon Keller? Sharon Keller, and after Sharon is Annette White?
Good evening. My name is Sharon Keller. I am a resident of District 211. I have a daughter who will be starting at Schaumburg High School in August. So I appreciate the opportunity to speak in front of the school board tonight. I want to show my opposition to the mask mandate. I believe that every citizen of the United States has, has the right to breathe fresh air from the moment they are born, and that I should not have to request that the mask mandate be removed, that it should just be automatic. Again, as people have said tonight, that there are studies that have showed that the carbon dioxide concentration is above allowable limits wearing a mask. And so those are the dangers. Also, I want to stress, one thing that has not been mentioned tonight is that every citizen of the United States of America is protected by federal law. Everyone should put this to memory. 21 U.S. Code 360BB-B-3 gives everyone, under an EUA, the right to approve or reject a medical product. And under this EUA, it covers the shot, the mask, and the PCR test. And we are all, also have the right to inform consent, because wherever there is risk, there is a right to choose. And so I want to share an experience that I had, because I do not want a mask. I do not want my daughter to mask up. We shouldn't have to. And so I took my daughter to freshman orientation last week, and I was retained by the Student Services Director. I was not allowed to join my daughter. She wanted to be masked up, and so that's fine. I understand her hesitancy with that. So for an hour and a half, I was sitting in an office, not allowed to be able to join in on the orientation on what's being shared with my daughter, although they are giving me the option to come back another time with my daughter. And they said there is a process that I can, they can submit on my behalf that I can become back mask-free. And so the Student Services Director shared with me that now she has to bring that up to somebody else who's going to bring it up to associate superintendent, and I'm supposed to get an update tomorrow.
You have one minute remaining.
I'm sorry, but I mean, this is just crazy to me. Again, we are all protected by federal law. Everyone has a voice here, even the school board members. If you say that you follow CDC guidelines, well, CDC is not the law. IDPH, ISBE is not the law. No one is above the federal law here. So let's follow the law, and you tell me how is it going to be accommodated? Because I do not plan on having my daughter start this school year being masked up. Thank you.
Annette White? Annette White? And after Ms. White is Isabel, and I cannot read the last name, number 72. Annette White is...
Okay, yeah, let's see if I can get through this without being booed, but... According to CDC guidelines, a mask should be worn by an unvaccinated individual's indoors, but then School District 211 used the word "recommended" instead of "should." Why do the district opt to use the same language by the CDC instead of "should," instead of making it optional? By asking those that are unvaccinated to wear masks, doesn't that unfairly reveal those with health issues? I really understand that. If everyone was required to wear a mask, then those that cannot get vaccinated would not be known. Everyone would be the same. Also, it is my understanding that you are unable to ask who is unvaccinated. So how can I ensure that those who have gotten the vaccine will wear, not gotten the vaccine, will wear a mask? And from what I hear it here, I bet most people that are not vaccinated probably will not be wearing the mask. That's my concern with sending my child. I have a school, a kid in the district, and that is my concern, that just like you have, don't have a right... that just like you don't have a right, you don't want the vaccine. I respect that you don't want the vaccine. But my child has a right also to wear a mask and not be near your child.
All right, please.
So, right. But then if my child wears a mask, then they will be ostracized, probably by your children.
Please, ladies, gentlemen? Ladies, gentlemen, please.
And as far as, you know, the mask having a breathing problem, I work with a public, and I wore a KN95 with a surgical mask. I had no problem. I wore it for 15 months.
Ms. White, please address the board.
Yeah, so colleges are requiring proof of vaccinations such as Elmhurst University of Illinois and NIU, to name a few. So most colleges are requiring, you know, vaccinations. So I'm like, why aren't you? So, but if it has to be where you're not requiring the vaccinations, then I prefer to be able to, my child, to be able to wear a mask and to not be in a lunchroom with unvaccinated kids so they can eat without, you know, eat without being worried, you know. So, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next is Isabel? What's the last name?
Keggy.
Keg, okay.
Okay, I just want to preface this by saying, although I am not ashamed of anything that's being discussed, it still takes a lot of courage to talk about your problems. Anyway. Hello, I'm Isabel Keggy. I graduated from Palatine High School. I'm a co-lead at March for Our Lives, and I'm a rising sophomore at the University of Oklahoma. The first year of college for any student is an experience unlike anybody else has. But moving 800 miles away from home during a pandemic to a place that I hadn't even had the opportunity to visit until move-in day took a toll on me that was previously unimaginable. Before going to college, I had already was diagnosed with ADD and anxiety and panic disorders. I thought I already knew how to cope with my previously diagnosed issues. However, the shock of the complete unfamiliarity I was faced with left me with obsessive and compulsive tendencies, all of which I thought were completely normal. My number was three. Three taps on the door lock or my family will die. Three times going to the bathroom or I wouldn't be able to sleep. If you don't get your paper in by 6:53, your boyfriend will break up with you. And finally, counting three over and over in my head until I couldn't think clearly anymore, and it began to affect every aspect of my life, socially and academically. I was on the verge of a breakdown. That's when I decided it was time to get help. Luckily, OU had the resources that I needed to help me before I completely crumbled. And big surprise, I was diagnosed with OCD. I believe that if I didn't get the help that I did, I wouldn't have made it through the semester, let alone the year. My school is very upfront with what mental health services they offer students, and a multitude of counselors are available to talk, listen, and work to find solutions and healthy coping mechanisms, all of which I believe D-21 lacks. We are informed about the resources available to us on the first-day orientation, and they even go as so far as to print the numbers of OU Health Services and OU Advisors and OU Counselors on the back of our IDs, which is something we use every single day.
You have one minute remaining.
Obviously, the services offered at a university are never going to be as vast as the ones offered at a high school. However, I do wish that more support was offered to me when I was a student at Palatine. That is why I'm demanding that the board and state clearer, more accessible, and more plentiful mental health resources to its students. Without the service provided to me, I probably wouldn't be here today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Natasha, number 76. Natasha? I'm sorry, I can't read the last name.
Hi, my name is Yosefin, and I'm a current student in D-21. I'm here today because I want to address the lack of...
Wait, excuse me. I have Natasha?
Oh, did you say Yosefin before?
No, I have number 76 Natasha, and I cannot read the last name. Whoever was number 76. Okay, Natasha, are you coming? Please.
Okay, so I am a student at Fremont High School, and I have had many mental health struggles in my past, and I have come to the school about it. And I've never really gotten much help. So I've reached out to my counselor, and he told me, I told him I was struggling and I needed help. He told me, what do you do for fun? I said, I ride my bike. He says, ride your bike. That's all he said, ride your bike. I've had many encounters with Student Services, and I've just faced aggression. There's no hearing anybody out. It's just straight-up aggression, and it's hard to deal with. There's no understanding. There's a lack of mental health resources. I am a co-founder of the Mental Health Advocacy Club at Fremont High School, and I am fighting for those resources for my school when my school has not helped me. I'm the one speaking for my school, trying to help other kids at my school so that they don't have to go through what I had to go through. And I also want to talk about the mask stuff because I never, I didn't know that this was happening. I'm going to preface this. I'm a medical intern. I'm in my scrubs right now. So basically, just because we are kids and we are, we can't, maybe not high-risk, does not mean that the people we're around aren't. And I'm sorry to the people in the audience, some of you guys are really high-risk. So if I get it and I spread it to you, I'm so sorry. I'm so sorry, but that sucks. So... Okay, cool. That's completely your choice. So I'm going to speak. Basically, 1/4, 1/4 of those hospitalized due to COVID-19 face heart issues. So what, we're not dying of COVID-19? We're dying of the heart issues that we get. You're dying of cardiac arrest. You're dying of heart failure. You're dying of all those things.
You have one minute remaining.
And we don't know the long-term effects of COVID either. That's also a different thing. So people in the audience say they care for the students, that they're speaking for the students with the mask stuff. They're saying, we don't, not to wear a mask because they're speaking for the students. When my friend is speaking for the students, speaking about her own issues with mental health, herself, her health, she is being jeered. They are making fun of her while she is speaking about her own mental health, her own issues. They don't care about the students. And I have hope that you guys are listening and see this from a student's perspective. All the students that have talked, the ones going to school, we are asking, please, please keep the mask mandate because COVID is a virus. It spreads. Just because we're vaccinated does not mean we don't spread. And I'm hearing talk right now, if you guys want to talk to me afterwards, please feel free. Please feel free to talk to me afterwards.
Ladies and gentlemen, please.
Thank you. No, really, please feel free to talk to me. I'm happy to talk. I am a medical intern. I have a lot of, I talk about this all the time.
Your speaking time is over.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next we have Robbie Volkmer, and after Robbie is Jane Van.
President Kunkelwitz, there's eight minutes remaining in the public comments.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Robbie Volkmer. I have three children, and two have graduated from Schaumburg High School, and one will be a junior there this year. After reviewing the board docs for this meeting, I am keeping my presentation brief and to three points as I believe D-21 is headed in the right direction regarding the 2021-22 school year safety protocols. Point one, masks should be optional, period. There are far more things that we should be concerned about children dying from. For example, suicide, anorexia, abuse, mental illness, and at higher rates than COVID. We have seen that children are rarely affected by COVID, and even if they do contract the virus, there is a whopping 99% survival rate. No one should ever force or pressure anyone to do anything unless you have compelling and overwhelming evidence to show it is necessary and highly beneficial. The damage and cost of avoiding COVID outweighs the risk of getting COVID. Point two, let us get back to work on educating and providing academic excellence to all D-21 students and making that the priority. D-21 has been losing academic focus for quite some time now, including the lack of even acknowledging academic achievers and helping them to excel to the next level. This past school year is going to make next school year even more challenging. Please focus on subjects like arithmetic, reading, and science, and put topics like critical race theory on hold. Mr. McGowan, I could not agree with you more regarding your Nelson Mandela quote on your Facebook Board of Education page.
You have one minute remaining.
Education is the most powerful weapon which you can use to change the world. Point three, again, I would like to express all my willingness to volunteer and help with a D-21 initiative to get all D-21 schools back on track and focusing on academics. There is clear incompetence within the district, and I have many examples, most of which I have provided at previous board meetings or during my meetings with Dr. Small. I hope the Board of Education will consider this initiative and working with the community. I would love for any Board of Education member to contact me about this initiative. Thank you for your time, and I hope to hear from you soon.
Next speaker is Jan Van. Jane Van?
Listening to comments that have been made, I jotted two notes to myself besides what I had written ahead of time. Regarding whether or not a face mask impairs your thinking ability, I thought to myself, doctors are performing brain surgery, organ transplants, et cetera, for 10-plus hours at a time wearing a face mask. I don't think it impairs your brain function. Every study that has been shown that shows a detriment to mask-wearing, there are probably 10 times as many showing there is no detriment to wearing a mask. I stand before this board tonight to make a simple request. I ask any decision you make tonight regarding back-to-school policies related to COVID-19 be made based on scientific facts rather than the emotional outpouring of parents and community members. We have been in an unprecedented pandemic for 16 months, and the end is not in sight. Variations of the original virus are now occurring that are more easily transmitted and affecting children and young adults more than the original virus. What happens in our schools has a direct impact on what happens in our community. When making your decision, trust science. Be respectful to all ages and community members. This should not be a decision based upon one's political beliefs. Science is the expert in this case.
Thank you. All right, at this point... All right, ladies and gentlemen, at this point, I still have 10 names that have signed up to speak. I'm going to extend the invitation to allow you to speak, but I'm going to call the name. If you have something new to add, please speak. If you do not have anything to add, you know that we have listened to a number of people, and I see we have both sides. I have Kristen Steele. Is there anything new that you would like to add?
I do have some new stuff, but I'm going to jump around. And first, I'm going to say, thank you guys for showing up. This is what community is about. This is what community is about, and this is what matters, our kids. We are all very aware of the competing and conflicting advice the district and administration has received over the course of the pandemic. What we also know, though, is that at this time, in all of this time, the Board of Education had the authority to set forth plans that would be best for our kids, prioritizing their learning. However, over the past year and a half, we were left with waiting, shifts in direction, and the picking and choosing of misguided guidelines from many agencies, and our Board of Education and administration did not take a stand nor lead. But we are here now. We're in a better place, and everyone here should fully understand that we have local authority to do what is best for our kids. As I stand here before you now, as I did last month, and the month before, and the month before, I ask that you look to make a plan for the upcoming school year and that you communicate to all parents that they have a choice regarding masking regardless of their vaccination status. There is no law requiring a school district to require the masking of children. We know that state funding in Illinois is based on student enrollment. There is absolutely no federal or state law that exists which allows the ISBE to withhold funding for making masks optional or not requiring vaccinations or not using unnecessary quarantine measures or not using a health screener. Pertaining to recognition status, per the ISBE website, public school recognition is determined by compliance with the school code. The school code focuses on the sound structure of the building, emergency exits, desks, chairs, things like that. As we all know to be factual, there is no federal or state law that requires masking, COVID-19 vaccination shots, contract tracing, quarantine, or the use of health screeners. School brings people together. Masks divide and drive imbalances. School is a happy place, School is a happy place, and children love to go to school. The past year and a half has very much stifled that, and it is our job to help undo that, and your job to lead in the plans to do so. Making masks conditional of vax status will do nothing more than to divide our community of students and goes against the very principle of what school in America is all about. It is discriminatory. I'll be sending you also a petition that has over 1,000 signatures of people in our community for making masks optional. Thank you. I also want to say that it's very shysty in the way that the guidelines that the school has. I don't know if you're aware, but Schaumburg Cheer, they were holding a big camp this week, and as they should, those girls from age kindergarten up through 12th grade were unmasked on Schaumburg High School property.
Your speaking time is over.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Ms. President, the hour is up.
Okay, our hour is up. Is there anyone that still has not spoken that has something other than the masks? Well, wait a second. We will. Okay, wait, wait, wait. I have a number, if you're not on the list here. Well, then you need to wait. I have 102. I can't read the name. We have heard a lot about the masks, so.
Yes, I know, I have something different, and it's my right to say what I want to say to the board. I have three minutes. So anyhow, first of all, what I would like to tell you is I understand that the kids are here tonight to talk about no police at the school. For you police, for the police that are all in this room tonight, I thank you. We applaud you. We appreciate your service. We want you in the schools, and please keep our kids safe and keep our community safe. Second of all, I am actually a graduate from University of Iowa. I also went to Fremont. I have three kids at Fremont High School. I am a nutrition and wellness major, that kind of thing. I do not believe in masks. I don't think that they work. But my biggest question of this, Kim, you are supposed to be, I think, the wellness director of this board or being doing something with the wellness, and the only thing that I could really find of that really brought the attention to me of what you are doing for the wellness for these kids are your Apple podcasts about the Sex Ed bill. Some of the topics of your podcasts, all about pubic hair, revenge porn, internal condoms, all about oral sex, all about anal sex, about the vulva, what nipples are for, queer sex, STDs, periods, and more, abortions, vagina, asexuality, and more. So you have been really busy. What I would really like to know, why would you be the one person on this board when I came here last month, and I asked that you all bring up the HB 818? She was the first one that said no. Now I wonder why. My other question is this: being a nutrition and whatever, kind of, I'm losing my train of thought here, but I would like to know also, the only thing that we are hearing from this board is masks and this shot. Why is there not a program that is being put in place for the kids that is talking about the benefits, like the other gentleman said? Vitamin D, vitamin C, zinc, how does magnesium help your body?
You have one minute remaining.
Okay. Chiropractic care, which boosts your immune system by 200%. Exercise, sunlight, healthy eating, this virus loves obese people, fresh air. Why are we not talking about what antibodies really do? Why are we not telling the children how T-cell memory works? We are not educating these kids in any way or shape or form on that. So, a couple of facts about my kids, because they could not come tonight. They are not afraid of COVID. They do not believe they will die of COVID. They do not believe they are super-spreaders. They do not believe they will kill their grandparents, who they have seen and have been seeing through the entire lockdown. My mom, actually, if you asked her, she is 75 years old, she would say, "Do not use me as an excuse to keep these kids in lockdowns, and at masks, I am capable of taking care of my own health." They want to play sports. They want to be in school, and they do not wear masks. Let the parents and children of our districts have their choice. Let them decide what is good for them and their families on their own. All kids, mask optional for '21, '22 school year. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we will be stopping the public comments because we have exceeded the hour. Okay. Obviously, I. Okay. All right, ladies, gentlemen. I'm very willing to listen to everyone, but you have to have some decorum here. Some of you people are being extremely rude to the speakers. Please. Please let me finish, ma'am. I've asked if we can go through this, if you have something different to add. All right, then we will do that. But I may ask you one last time to please allow the speaker to speak, and please hold your actions in bay. All right. Is there a Jeannie Whitfield? Jeannie. All right. If that happens again, I am going to ask that we clear the room, because we do have business that has to take place. Please respect the board meeting. I'm sorry, please go ahead.
Thank you. So thank you very much. Thanks to everyone who gathered here tonight. I am grateful that we are invited into a space where we are empowered to share our voices and be heard. So thank you very much to the Board of Education for this opportunity to speak tonight. I am here today in support of the student-led call for greater mental health support in our classroom. Today's student testimonials speak to the needs and the trauma our students are carrying into the classroom. It is not our place to debate the vitality of these experiences, but to hear, believe, and uplift the voices of our student population. All of our students deserve to feel safe and supported. We are all a part of the same team, and we have a shared mission: to provide the safest, most supportive environment for our students. As we have heard today, some of the current programs in our D-211 schools are not the most effective way of meeting these goals. Trained mental health professionals should be the first called to address the mental health needs in our classrooms. If D-211 intends to live up to their mission of serving needs of the community and inspiring all students, we must adopt a trauma-informed education model and prioritize more highly-trained social work staff in our schools. The effectiveness of actions like these is supported by research conducted by the U.S. Department of Education in 2016. I am proud of the strength our students have shown tonight. The Students of March for Our Lives are asking for four things: an end to the police consultation program, and a replacement of those staff members with licensed counselors and clinical social workers, those who are best trained to address mental health crises; an increase in the minority mental health personnel to better serve our students of color; and greater publicity of resources available in our wonderful community. In meeting these needs, we can better achieve our shared goal of supporting all members of our D-211 student and community population.
You have one minute remaining.
Thank you. All right, is there Courtney Larson? And after Courtney is Lisa Reeswig? All right, Courtney.
I've never been to a board meeting before, and this is really crazy, but I'm here to talk to you guys about organ donation. So my name is Courtney Larson. I'm the 2021 International Junior Miss Illinois teen, and I am a recent honors graduate of Schaumburg High School. And today, I wanted to talk to you guys about organ donation education. As you may know, many of our students decide to take their mandatory driver's ed class within D-211 schools. I've been very fortunate to be able to speak to many driver's ed classes at Schaumburg High School about organ donation. I'm an affiliate with Life Goes On, which is the Jesse White Secretary of State's Organ Donation Program, and I kind of noticed that there is a definite lack in the education of organ donation in our schools. In the state of Illinois, it is mandatory that there's at least 30 minutes of organ donation education. And I just wanted to let you guys know that Life Goes On will send an affiliate and an employee to do a free seminar to better educate our students about what it means to be an organ donor and what it means to check that box when they get their DMV at the license, when they get their license at the DMV, sorry. And I just also wanted to say that in 2017, there was a law passed in Illinois that students at 16 can go and register to be an organ donor. So I feel that the better we educate our students about what it means to be an organ donor, the more lives they will save 10s and 20s years from now. And with COVID, we've seen that someone within the Schaumburg area, there was a civilian who received a double lung transplant because of his battle with COVID-19. So that just goes to show that no matter what, organ donors are very, very needed and very essential to our society. So the better we educate our students, the more lives will be saved in the long run. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I also have some brochures for you.
Lisa Reeswig?
Yes, ma'am. My name's Lisa Reeswig. I spoke with you guys last August, and the main topic of my speech last August was mental health and what the COVID lockdown and the muzzling of our children has done to their mental health. I send my children to school to learn the ABCs, the 1-2-3s, and continue on to figure out what their professions are. I don't send them to be pawns in my political game, in your political game, or anyone's political game. This isn't about left or right. This isn't about black, white, up, down. This is about our children. I don't want my child muzzled. You're forcing many parents, who are on the fence about this vaccine, which is experimental, to say, "Okay, I'll vaccinate you because I don't want you to have to be muzzled." Don't do that. Don't bully parents. Please don't. If the vaccine truly works, and we're going to go with that, then everyone who's vaccinated, I might be, I might not be, shouldn't be afraid of my unmuzzled child. If we're going to talk science, can we please talk about what our children eat? How many hours of sleep they get? What drugs they're ingesting? What supplements they're not taking? I picked up a few of your all's breakfasts, lunches, dinners a couple of times through this. My daughter, who's turning nine on Saturday, said, "Mom, these are desserts." This was your breakfast. So please don't stand here and tell me to follow the science when you're not following the science everywhere else. I want my child unmuzzled. It's not good for his mental health. It's really not. I support y'all so wholeheartedly, because this COVID thing brought teens to their knees, to their knees. I watched my bright, social, athletic 15-year-old wilt.
You have one minute remaining.
I don't want to watch it anymore. I want to see his friends smile with him. I want him to go to homecoming. I want him to eat lunch with his buddies. And I want him to experience the high school experience you did, and you did, and you did, and you did. So if we're going to follow the science, let's follow the science of mental health and health outside of COVID-19, because we've forgotten 99% of everything else in this world. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joyce Slavic. Joyce Slavic.
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavic. I had two kids in D-211 from last year, one a freshman, one a senior, so I have a sophomore coming up this year. I won't read all my remarks, just because a lot of it's been covered, but I want to say I totally support the March for Our Lives students. Absolutely, a police officer with a gun is not a substitute for a mental health professional. We do need to improve that, without a doubt. With the pandemic, that has certainly been made worse, before the pandemic, after the pandemic. Young people need mental health resources, absolutely. I had dental work today, and both the dentist and the nurse, and the assistant, both wore masks. They wear them all day, neither one passed out from wearing a mask. Be leaders, please. Promote the vaccine. People do not, it's not required, they do not have to get it at this point, to be in the school. Be a leader. Mr. Kramer, I was very disappointed at the last board meeting when you said, "Oh, I don't want to say if I had it or not." Be a leader. Encourage people to get a life-saving vaccine. People do not have to do it.
Ladies, gentlemen. Ladies, gentlemen.
It's proven to be effective worldwide. There are people that cannot get the shot.
Please stop. Ladies and gentlemen, please.
And I can take it, but it was extremely, extremely embarrassing to watch these people, GRS students, talking about mental health and the struggles they're going through. There are people that cannot get the shot, including immunocompromised people, like some of my fellow cancer survivors, and children younger than 12. Let's be responsible for the staff that have younger people at home, so that we can take care of them. We know the Delta variant is surging throughout the country, including Missouri and southern Illinois. I would like to thank the board for following the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Cook County Public Health. Please continue to do that. I recognize now, it's grayer now, but they are still saying. My son is in volleyball now camp. He does not have to wear his mask when he's in volleyball camp because he was vaccinated.
You have one minute remaining.
Separately, I would like to applaud the staff, the students, the community members, and the five board members that participated in the Equity Team over the past year. I was so impressed with the presentation at the last board meeting that I watched via Zoom. I really look forward to the culturally responsive learning and the staff diversity plans as they take form. I've been attending social justice discussions both at my work and through community events, and I've gotten valuable information and recognized how easy it is to not see racism, sexism, or gender identity discrimination when it's not something you experience. We all do better when we give all our kids an equitable chance to succeed. It's okay for those conversations to be uncomfortable, as long as they're in an open, safe place. Equity should be included in all parts of the education. Thank you.
Thank you. Sherry Erlacher. And after Sherry is Tracy Boland.
Hi, I'm not going to talk about a lot because it's been covered. I just want to inform all of my peers about the law in Illinois called the Healthcare Right of Conscious Act. The citation is 745 ILCS 70. This law prohibits discrimination by public schools against anyone refusing to wear a mask and/or get vaccinated. I have printed this out, if anyone wants it. As parents, we have the right to refuse masks and vaccines for our minor children, and they have the right to refuse them themselves. I encourage all of you to read up on this law and get with your attorneys about it. My attorneys are working on it as we speak, should the board continue to vote for this nonsense. I've also printed up opt-out forms, because we all legally have the right to opt out of anything that the public school is providing. If you want to get with me, I'll give you one of those, or I can email it to you. I also have resource packets of lots of information I've been gathering from attorneys. So get with me if you want to have that, but we don't have to send our children to school in the fall with masks. I am not. So thank you.
Thank you. Tracy Boland. And after Tracy, we have Yosefin Lee, I believe.
My name is Tracy Boland, and I am a resident of District 211. I thank all you board members for your time and your diligent efforts navigating our school district through some very challenging times. You are a Board of Education, so it is necessary and proper that you make educated decisions. And by educated, I mean informed. I hope you seek out information from a variety of relevant sources. I am counting on you to use science and reason to separate speculation from tested theory. Our community has top-notch schools because you are responsible stewards. We have students like Pavan and the students who spoke earlier, and I am just blown away by what our schools are producing. At this point in time, the state and the country's best medical experts say that vaccines, masking, and social distancing are the responsible choices to combat COVID. I strongly urge you to follow the IDPH guidelines and prepare for a school year where students are required to wear masks. Thank you.
Thank you. Yosefin Lee. And then I have one last gentleman. It's a young man by the name of Philip.
Hi again. Sorry for coming up too early.
That's okay.
Hi, my name is.
Please put the microphone closer to you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Yosefin, and I'm a current student in D-211. I'm here today because I wanted to address the lack of mental health resources in schools, as well as the lack of representation for people of color. In recent years, so many students have needed help and haven't received it.
Speak up, Yosefin.
I'm tired of seeing my friends and those around me struggle without being able to get help. School is supposed to be a place where kids are taken care of and can find comfort, but instead, it's one of the biggest stressors in life. Students are met with constant neglect and aren't validated in their experiences as who they are and their home life, and they need to be listened to. In addition, the police consulting program is completely unnecessary and causes more of a disconnect between students and the staff. Regarding the issue of the de-escalation of fights, it's more important to solve the root of the problems and causing the fights, instead of creating more issues when trying to find a solution, especially when it is clear to see that students need help not from cop intervention, but from someone who can listen and understand them. Cops don't help. They invalidate and silence students who have been crying for help for so long. We need support. It is our opportunity to change the present, so we don't regret the future. Please support the boy who wants to be an artist one day, and the girl who wants to become an engineer, someone who's non-binary to pursue the medical field, or anyone for that matter, to receive help when there are signs of struggle. Protection starts when students' mental health is addressed and validated. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker, Philip.
Hello, my name is Philip Popoca. I'm a student from SD 54, and I am here to share my experience from my class. I had a classmate who had a panic attack from wearing a mask. She fell down from her chair, and everyone thought that she just might have just tripped, but she didn't get back up. Everyone was so scared, and we had to call the nurse, and she had to go home. Thankfully, she was okay, but I just wouldn't want anyone to have the same experience or to relive it. And that's why we shouldn't wear masks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I would like to thank all of our speakers, and I would like to really thank all of our students. They were the most respectful in this room, and I think some of our adults could learn from our students. They listened. We listened to them. I thank you for doing that. I thank those adults who participated. I thank you for sharing. We will move on to the next item of business, which is a presentation of the Esser Funding.
Point of order.
Yes, sir.
Point of order. I know we're moving on to the next agenda item. From my earlier emails to you today and the superintendent, I asked that we move up Item 10A to this point in the meeting. I don't understand why we can't do that.
Because it's a new business item, and we're following the agenda here.
Is that the ruling of the chair?
Yes.
I appeal the ruling of the chair.
We have a speaker.
You've got three minutes.
We need to be heard.
Okay.
I'm sorry. I came up there early.
I'm sorry. I came up there earlier.
Okay, there's two, two items going on. The board member is, is asking a question that doesn't deal with that. And I, I do apologize. You came up with the little boy, and I made the assumption that you were with the little boy.
It was both of us. I was trying to help him with him, sorry.
So, do you have something different to add?
I'm sorry. Three minutes.
Please come up to the podium.
My name is Kelly Lapatina, and I'm a business owner in Palatine and reside with children in District 211. Thank you for giving me this time to speak with you today. To be clear, I am for a mask optional school year, including busing and all extracurriculars for our district. One of the main reasons we all shut down in the first place was to protect our loved ones. We knew from the beginning of the pandemic that children have nearly zero threat to this virus. We now have a vaccine. The vulnerable population has a choice to receive this vaccine. According to the White House, as of July 6, 90% of our seniors have all been vaccinated. There is no reason to mask our children to protect our most vulnerable. Just like the woman's right to choose what happens to their bodies, receiving a vaccine that is not FDA-approved must be a choice to an individual and/or their family, and to not be discriminated against for any choice. It's actually a big deal, discrimination in this country that people have fought and died over protecting. We cannot coerce or forcefully distinguish people from those that have been vaccinated or have not been vaccinated by any means, including masks and any identifying vaccine card or passport. It is discrimination, period, and it's un-American. The CDC stated in regards to children, the risk of serious complications is higher for the flu. The CDC assesses, it's higher for the flu as compared with COVID-19 for children. We do not mask our kids if they do not get a flu shot, so why would we mask our kids for not getting a COVID shot? The mental wellness, which I had no idea there were so many children here already speaking about it. They are crying for this.
You have one minute remaining.
The mental wellness of our children is at an all-time low since this pandemic began. We must start collecting our resources and doing everything to support our kids to recover from this pandemic. They suffered enough in order to protect the most vulnerable. Now it is our time to protect their well-being. These kids are our future. Putting masks on them, covering their beautiful, youthful, energetic smiles in their environment will not help support them to become the compassionate, strong leaders we need them to be in order to have the great future we all want. For these reasons, I ask that you hear the community, not only all of those that took the time to be here today and who have signed countless petitions, and remember your oath to represent us and support a mask optional school year for our kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, at, at this point, Mr. Kramer has asked a question, and we need to, to my understanding, we need to follow the agenda as we have because that is what has been published, and it's under the new business. So, we will continue with presentations.
Appeal the ruling of the chair. I appeal the ruling of the chair.
And, no.
That requires a voice vote by the board members to either sustain or override your, your ruling.
All right, let me ask, let me poll, excuse me, ladies and gentlemen. All right, let me find out if, one moment. All right, let me ask, excuse me, excuse me. Let me poll our board members and.
Madam Chairman.
Yes, sir.
This is not a poll. This is a vote. They are completely different.
I don't have, you've not made a motion, and.
I saw a move. My understanding is that appealing the rule of the chair does not require a second nor a motion.
All right, let me poll the board and Mr. Excuse me. Thank you for the parliamentary guidelines. We're working on this. Thank you. All right. All right, let me take a vote. May I have a roll call, please? And the question is being able to move the. 10A, an update on safety protocols and mask guidelines for the schools prior to the presentation.
Can we have discussion, please?
All right.
Okay, we've been at this, we've been at this for about two and a half hours. The, the business before 10A will probably take another two hours, okay? And you, you are asking these people who are part of the community, who have different, different ideas, different opinions, to sit through two and a half hours of business before we actually get to the elephant in the room?
I would think that it's not going to be two and a half hours of business, but I also think that the presentation on the elementary and secondary emergency relief is important, and it addresses the, the questions that our young people had about the mental health. So, is there any other discussion? Is, is there any other, is there any other, ladies, gentlemen, please, is there any other discussion?
Ms. President, I think getting the majority of the room out the door sooner will probably result in the decorum you're desiring.
All right, is there any other discussion?
I'm not interested in caving in to antics every other. There have been groups of students months ago that came to speak to us about their experiences in the school that were every bit as agitated as community members here, and those people had to sit through a couple of hours of information on the agenda as presented because that, that's what orders the meeting, and that's the thing that's missing here, is a general respect for the order of the meeting. So, I'm not interested in caving in to antics just in order to get some sense of order, which should be present already because we're supposedly grown-ups and capable of behaving.
All right, please.
So, I have some comments. First of all, there are several people here in this meeting in the audience who were present, one, maybe two years ago, two years ago, I believe, when there was another topic that had as much conversation and public comment being made to the, the existing board at that time. The agenda was not changed, and the topic that was majorly presented during public comments was still later in the meeting, and the people who came to speak on that topic did have to wait. We have an agenda that has been published, and I think we are under obligation to follow that agenda. If people do not want to stay for that portion and to hear the discussion that's going to be presented, then it's up to them to leave. And in my opinion, if the decorum of this meeting is not going to be followed to allow this board to conduct its business, then the room should be cleared of everybody who is not either an administrator or a board member so that we can conduct our board meeting and our process as required, and it is our right to do so.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Nay.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Nay.
Mrs. Klimkowitz? I'm sorry, I missed Mr. Dombrowski. Mr. Dombrowski?
Well, thank you, Sally. Uh, yes.
Mrs. Klimkowitz? No. So, we will follow the agenda. The next item of business is the presentation. As our presenters are coming forward, it is my pleasure to introduce them. Okay, if you're going to remain, I ask you to please be quiet and listen to the presentation. We have a few people that are leaving. Can we wait a few minutes and let them leave? If someone is leaving, please do so. All right, our presenters are getting ready. Please offer them the respect that they deserve for giving us information, presenting information in regards to the district. Okay, we still have a moment. There's still some people exiting. It is my pleasure to introduce Barb Peterson, our Controller and Treasurer, Michelle Napier, our new college and career, College and Career Director, and Josh Schumacher, our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction. There can present some of our plans and ideas coming forward for the ESER money that has been presented to our district and some of the unique opportunities that presents to us to provide for our students.
Good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to present information regarding the past, present, and future utilization of funding provided to District 211 through the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Grant. I'm grateful this evening to be joined by Ms. Napier and Ms. Peterson. This series of grants, more commonly known as ESER, provides states and local school districts with emergency relief funds to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the impact of the COVID-19 pandemic. Since March of 2020, the federal government has passed three separate relief packages in response to the effects on students and schools as we have progressed through the unknown and unpredictable nature of the COVID-19 pandemic. We believe that it is, it is important to frame this presentation and the purpose of each relief package within the understanding of the context, of the timing, and the reality of each relief package. As we have all collectively and individually experienced, we have lived through different seasons and phases through the past 17 months. We have fluctuated through fear, confusion, anger, resentment, disappointment, and most recently, hope for a return to normalcy with the application of lessons learned during the pandemic. Each legislative package within the ESER fund is based in the context and the reality of these phases of the pandemic. The first stimulus bill, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, more commonly known as the CARES Act, was passed in March of 2020 specifically to provide immediate funding to schools so that they could pivot to remote learning while still supporting students' social, emotional, and physical needs. Remember that the context is important. We were transitioning an educational system in an entire country into an unprecedented environment where fear, confusion, and trauma were the norm. Although Ms. Peterson will detail the use of these funds in a few minutes. From a practical standpoint, District 211 utilized the CARES Act funds to meet students where they were at and ensure that learning, support, and could, could continue in spite of the coronavirus. The second stimulus bill, the Coronavirus Relief, Response, and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, was passed in late December of 2020. The country was in a very different context at this time, with many schools either in a hybrid or in-person environment or transitioning to that hybrid in-person environment. This funding was designed to be used towards mitigating the predicted learning loss that many of our most vulnerable students have endured, as well as restoring the high-quality in-person educational environments that we are traditionally used to. Knowing that the context is so important and knowing the actual current reality that we experience in August, we are still finalizing our plans for the use of this funding. I will expand upon those plans later in the presentation. The third stimulus bill, the American Rescue Plan, was passed in March of 2021, a full 12 months after the inception of the ESER fund. This was the largest amount of funding, almost eight times the original amount, and was designed to be used towards returning all students to in-person instruction while also mitigating the short-term and long-term effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. This legislation is significantly different from the first two, and we'll talk about the differences in a few minutes. While both states and local school districts have the ultimate responsibility of spending the funding in both an impactful and fiscally responsible manner, the legislation does provide some guidance by providing potential categorical uses. For our context in District 211, six summarized categories proved to be the most impactful. These categories include response. This category includes the development and implementation of procedures and systems to both immediately respond and prepare for the next phase. Training. Before I talk about this category, I just want to publicly share how proud and grateful I am to be part of the District 211 staff. Our staff, particularly our teaching staff, has done an amazing job of adapting and pivoting their classroom environments and teaching strategies during each phase of the pandemic. I realize that not every member of our, not every member of our community was happy or satisfied with the learning environment, but I think that we can all recognize that our teaching staff rose to the challenge of continuing to provide supportive classroom environments and excellent learning opportunities even in the face of the most significant collective adversity that most of us have faced in our lives. The third category is sanitation. As you likely remember from early phases of the pandemic, hand sanitizer, soap, and disinfectant products were some of the most purchased products by households. This was true for school districts as well, as we wanted to ensure the cleanliness and safety of our classrooms and facilities. It is important to note that this category also included the ability to purchase products that would upgrade our facilities, including air filters, updates to ventilation systems, and other potential facility improvements. The next category, technology, allows funds to be used to purchase software, hardware, and associated equipment to improve the remote and/or hybrid classroom learning environment, while the mental health category is focused on the humans and the systems through which we provide social, emotional support to our students and families. Finally, the student learning category focuses the effort towards activities that transition students back into the school and classroom environment and also provide opportunities to increase skills or content knowledge potentially missed during the pandemic. Tonight, we want to explain how we have or how we plan to utilize the funding from each of these stimulus packages separately, and it is helpful to simultaneously explain the context within the funding. Before we do that, we also want to highlight two important differences that exist in the third stimulus that were not present in the first two. The first is that we must utilize 20% of our allocation of the ESER III funds to specifically address learning loss. As you can see from the definition on the slide, we have already created programs consistent with this requirement that are running this summer. The second requirement is that we must engage in our community in providing feedback towards the use of the ESER III funds. Ms. Peterson will walk you through a breakdown of the overall District 211 financials, including how we applied funding from the CARES Act.
The federal ESER funds were distributed in lump sum to the state of Illinois, and it was up to the state of Illinois to. and it was up to the state of Illinois to divide up that money among the local districts. The distribution to the local districts was made in the same proportion as Title I funding, and as a reminder, Title I funds are based upon the number of students in our district who qualify for free or reduced-price meals. Next slide, please. As you can see in the chart, each ESER award was significantly more than the award before it. Also, the length of time for use of the eligible expenditures was a year longer for each successive grant. For all grants, the funding of the expenditures can date back to the beginning of the pandemic, which was declared on March 13th of 2020. This has important implications, which we'll discuss later tonight. For ESER I, we were allocated $1.1 million, which we were able to use through September of 2022. We've already filed our application for these funds. We've spent all these funds. We've been reimbursed for over $700,000 already, and we will wrap up this grant in the first quarter of this year and should get the remaining funds shortly. Our anticipated ESER II award is $4.1 million that we can use through the end of the '23 school year. We are currently working on our application and budget for this funding, and we have programs running this summer that we will claim on this grant. We anticipate our share of the ESER III funding to be almost $9.3 million. Once again, this money can be used on items already purchased dating back to the beginning of the pandemic and can be spent through September of 2024, so we have three years to spend the money. As you can imagine, this large award comes with more planning requirements, spending, and reporting requirements than the other two grants, as Josh discussed a few minutes ago. We are just beginning to plan out the best use of this funding of the ESER III award. Overall, the district anticipates receiving $14.5 million for the combined ESER grants, which will be fully utilized by the end of the '23-'24 school year. We received notification of the CARES Act award in May of 2020, and at that point in time, we didn't know if we would be back in school in the fall. We didn't know how long the pandemic would last, and we didn't know if this might be our only federal funding that we would receive relating to the pandemic. We just knew that we wanted to spend this money on the support of our students. Approximately half of our funding was spent on salaries and benefits in the spring and summer of 2020. It supported programs such as summer remote and in-person engagement, summer incomplete remediation, teacher development and training, remote learning teams, and meal delivery for families who are unable to get to our schools to pick up free meal bags. The CDC mandated that we take the body temperature of each person entering our school buildings for the '21 school year. We purchased scanning equipment to take the body temperatures of multiple individuals simultaneously as they walked into our buildings, and were able to claim reimbursement under the CARES Act. We can also claim our screening software, which was used by our students and faculty daily during the last year. We spent about $270,000 over the last year on software in order for our students to learn and engage remotely and to assist teachers in teaching their best while teaching both remotely and in hybrid environments. This money paid for our Zoom licensing, MiFi hotspots for students who did not have access to the internet, wireless headsets for teachers, and several educational software tools. We challenged our technology department to get creative with solutions that were both excellent learning tools and cost-effective, and they delivered. As an example of this, we wanted our students in computer programming and Project Lead the Way classes to be able to use the software that was available only on the desktop computers in their classrooms in the school buildings. Providing our students with laptops to use remotely was one solution, but it was very cost prohibitive. Our technology department was able to provide a solution where students could use their iPads to remotely connect to our desktop machines in our buildings and use the specialized software at a fraction of the cost of laptops. We rented tents that you may have seen in the school parking lots in the spring and fall, which provided outdoor meeting space for staff, and we rented additional outdoor sports fields facilities so that our athletic teams could socially distance. And finally, we purchased some sanitation supplies and PPE, which will be reimbursed on this grant. Note that these supplies were purchased after September 15th, and on the next slide, I'll get into why. Again, we've already been reimbursed for over $700,000 from this grant, and we'll receive the remainder of these funds likely in the first quarter of this year. Wanted to talk briefly about how other grants are feathering into these federal funds. We applied for some relief from FEMA. I filed for three grants. FEMA changed the rules relating to school reimbursements for this emergency for purchases made after September 15th, and they made it much more difficult to get reimbursement for anything after September 15th. So that's why the PPE after this date is on the ESER grants. I did file three reimbursements, the first of which was gloves, which has already been approved and paid out. Masks and sanitations were denied. They're asking for some additional information. We do have two appeals that we plan to make on these. We feel like we have a good basis to get this money. However, if we are unsuccessful, we can go back and claim this on either ESER II or ESER III, because remember, it goes back to the beginning of the pandemic. So this is great. If we get denied here, we'll definitely get this reimbursement through ESER. The other federal funding during the pandemic was for free breakfast and lunch for all students, 18 or younger, for all members of our community. Two items to emphasize here, we provided meals to all individuals who were under 18 who needed it, not just our District 211 students, and this program ran all year, not just during the school year, and we're very proud to be able to provide this service to our community members in need. The federal meal reimbursement for these programs was higher on a per-meal basis than during the regular school year, which allowed us some greater flexibility in purchasing and preparation. It did not, however, cover the cost of delivering these meals to homebound families, so this additional cost was reimbursed on the ESER grants. Although we did receive about $6 million in reimbursement for these meal programs, these programs are break-even, which they're intended to be. We don't make a profit on these programs.
Ms. Peterson indicated that summer incomplete remediation was funded through the ESER I CARES Act, and I'd like to share with you how this funding has allowed us during times of crises to make a difference for our students. Due to the global pandemic, statewide suspension of in-person instruction began on March 16th, 2020. It became apparent by moving learning off-site that there are factors that impacted students' learning outside of the control of the school system. ISBE provided schools with guidance on grading based upon the principle of "no educational harm to students." ISBE recommended that a student who is not able to be engaged or who chooses to disengage in remote learning due to this unprecedented pandemic crisis should receive an incomplete or no grade. In place of an F, for example, the recommendation was for an incomplete to be issued so that the grade can be made up by a student. In that spirit, at the end of the school year, 2020, our teachers were asked to identify students who were earning a failing grade as of March 16th and were unable to move their grade to a passing level by the end of the semester. As teachers know their students best, they were able to identify students who they believed, given a little more time and support, would have the potential to earn a passing grade. Through the teacher, counselors, and administrators at each building, conversations and reviews occurred, and 127 individual students earned an incomplete grade at the end of the second semester of 2020. Student grades were finalized and data was reviewed. Of the 127 students initially identified, 31 of those students had at least two or more courses to remediate, resulting in 204 course enrollments across 62 different courses. To provide individual student support to these students in these courses, we would need to hire 40 teachers that would be assigned to small groups of students by curricular area needs. Now that we had our numbers, it was time to get to work and create a brand-new program focusing on supporting this group of students. We were in the midst of chaos, basically working remotely, yet needing to find ways to create, communicate, connect, and deliver support services to some of our most at-risk and challenging students. With additional funding from ESER, we introduced the Summer Incomplete Remediation Program and designed it purely on the needs of our identified students. The goal was to provide a one-to-one tutor to each student in order to move them academically forward in their courses in which they earned an incomplete grade the previous semester. Students would earn a passing grade by showing proficiencies in predetermined critical learning standards not met during the school year. We hired teachers, met with them via Zoom, and created an interactive online tracking system for weekly updates and communications. Our students' and parent outreach process was focused and intentional. Prior to teachers reaching out to students, summer school administrators sent letters and emails to parents and students introducing them to this program, followed up by individual phone calls home to set clear expectations of the program and answer any questions. Teacher continued personal outreach through phone calls, emails, and Zoom meetings. So within two weeks, we identified students, created systems, hired and trained teachers, and completed parent-student outreach. Our summer remediation team was committed to student success, finding ways to connect with students to deliver creative and innovative curriculum in a remote environment. It seemed simple and straightforward. However, through the summer student outreach, it became increasingly clear the challenges our students were facing as a result of the pandemic, including students having to care for younger siblings, students working to support financial strains at home, and students who were coping with the illness or loss of a family member. Our teachers were vitally important to bridging the school-home relationship and found that the traditional outreach methods of email and phone calls at home were not enough. So now, this next part may seem logical, but it's because we've been through a year and a half of a pandemic. So let's take a moment to reflect back to May of 2020. Our country was at a point that each day we would anxiously await for the noon COVID Federal Task Force briefing, shortly followed by our state updates. Concerned on how the virus was closing in our families. As we ended the school year in May 2020, the CDC reported more than 1.6 million active coronavirus cases, with 95,000 total deaths and 25,000 new cases being reported daily with no foreseeable end in sight. We were anxious, we were isolated, and we were scared to say the least. So as we embarked on a new summer program remediation, trying to bridge the gap between school and home, we were faced with challenges as the schoolhouse remained closed and the traditional school-day hours may not fit our students' new pandemic lifestyles. So we shifted our mindset. Instead of bringing students to school to learn, teachers brought school to them. They grabbed their masks, gloves, and individually packaged donuts, put their own fears aside, and drove to their students' homes, grabbed a table and chair, and taught outside. We wanted to share a few of these pictures because it helps put that moment in time in perspective and the amazing impact this program had on our students. We were driving around the district, making initial contacts, dropping off paper homework packets to their homes, delivering food when needed, zooming into the evening hours, and making scheduled pickups to pick up completed assignments. And overall, it seemed to work. Students increasingly became engaged, building relationships with teachers, and emotionally becoming connected to school again. What you cannot see on paper or through this presentation is the gratitude and relief students and their families felt as we supported their students' academic journey because we believed in their success. Teachers listened to their stories and found creative ways to embed student current experiences into their assignments. Our message became, "We are in this together," and as our staff embraced the fundamental belief that all kids need is a little help, a little hope, and someone to believe in them. Despite our initial outreach efforts of the 127 students who were initially offered this program, four students refused the remediation support from the beginning. As this program identified some of our most challenging students when it comes to engagement, we recognized the outreach challenges in front of us in the face of a global pandemic. After six weeks of innovative and creative student outreach and the engagement, overall, 80% of our students earned a pass as they showed proficiencies in the critical learning standards aligned for that course, while 25 individual students earned a grade of audit as recommended by ISBE's grading guidelines backed due to the lack of engagement and student refusal. And as we continue our work this summer, we leveraged what we learned last year, adopting the mindset of flexibility, school partnership, and creativity in outreach and curricular delivery. Our trauma-informed response to students has allowed us to improve our curriculum delivery while meeting the needs of the whole student, especially important during times of crises. Through continued funding with ESER, the Summer Incomplete Remediation Program continues to support 148 students with 159 course enrollments, and five weeks into the program, we are already seeing great outcomes from our students. Additionally, 78 senior students are currently receiving an additional layer of support as they are working hard to meet their final graduation requirements and earn their diploma this summer. And lastly, ESER funding this summer has allowed for additional in-person learning opportunities through the summer enrichment or summer advancement program. Funding supported through ESER has allowed us to positively react to student academic outcomes resulting from the global pandemic and giving them a chance to remediate grades. We had the ability to create individual summer programs that met the specific needs of our students, and because of this opportunity, we have positively changed the trajectory of our students' academic path while continuing to build those relationships through the connections they made with trusted adults in our buildings.
As Ms. Napier shared, our use of the ESER I funding put our students at the center. Our plan for ESER II also ensures that the majority of the funding will be allocated directly to support students. While we know that our current context is important, we don't have absolute certainty about what exactly our students will need when they return in August. In order to ensure that we are able to pivot and provide exactly what is needed when it is needed, we have created a District 211 Learning Renewal Team. The Learning Renewal Team will focus on two major areas of student support. We envisioned an iceberg to represent the work of this team and the focus of the ESER II funding. The top of the iceberg represents what we know. Students will need additional academic support as they transition back to full in-person learning. Much like the iceberg analogy, we see this and we know this. We also have structures in place to ensure that all students have access to support. Specific examples that we will implement include strengthening our current intervention systems, including freshman programs, guided study options, in-school and after-school tutoring, and, of course, SAT preparation options. A large portion of the funding will be allocated towards the salaries for District 211 teachers and staff members to facilitate these options for students. Included in this will be support for students who qualify for home-hospital instruction during this school year, as well as students who are required to quarantine for a period of time due to COVID-19 transmission. Students who need to quarantine and are not able to attend in-person school for short periods of time will be provided direct access to teacher tutors to assist in keeping up with their schoolwork and minimizing any disruption to their learning. As you can see, the larger portion of the iceberg is submerged below the water. In this analogy, we don't actually know the extent or the makeup of this section. This constitutes the other focus of the team, student social-emotional help. Although we don't actually know the extent of the social-emotional support that students will need, we do know that it will likely be more than it has been in the past. Specific allocation of ESER II funding for this area of focus will include the hiring of additional staff positions, including hiring additional social workers who can provide direct outreach to students and families, connect with local agencies, and monitor the ebb and flow of student social-emotional help as the year progresses. We also plan to utilize ESER II funding to purchase Panorama, which was approved at last month's board meeting, to provide us immediate opportunities to identify student needs and support options. The team is guided by a set of core principles, which correspond to the recommendations in the P20 Council Learning Renewal Resource Guide. These principles include focusing on students who have been impacted the most by the COVID-19 pandemic, prioritizing to improve our current evidence-based interventions and developing new supports that fill in the gaps, aligning our efforts with ISBE goals, maintaining a strong focus on equity, and continually analyzing our context, our current reality, and the outcome and impact of our efforts. The team has developed a three-pronged approach to the implementation of both the academic and the social-emotional supports. Although these three phases will ultimately be facilitated parallel to each other, perhaps the most important at this time is the re-engagement of students and families. This re-engagement encompasses both social-emotional re-engagement, specifically towards the in-person learning environment, and the academic engagement in class activities and assignments. We have already begun this phase with our summer school, incomplete remediation, and summer advancement programs, and our schools are individually reaching out to students and families, but we will also increase our efforts as we get closer to the start of the school year. The second phase is to identify and understand what we call our current reality. We know that students have changed. They've changed both collectively and individually as a result of the pandemic, and we need to assess the context and current reality that we face as we return to full in-person instruction. We have the means through Panorama to identify social-emotional wellness and the means through our academic intervention and monitoring to identify academic weaknesses and opportunities for additional interventions. This phase will begin when students walk back into our building in August and continue throughout the course of the school year and likely in the next few. Finally, we seek to create tailored interventions, both for groups of students and for individual students, to ensure both academic success and social-emotional help. Although they will be based directly on the current reality and the current needs of students, we anticipate additional in-school and additional after-school academic tutoring. We envision student services staff members who will make home visits to support students and families, as well as additional summer programs throughout the course of the next few years. As we look forward to the utilization of ESER III funding, we need to take additional steps to analyze, determine the impact of our current programs, and ensure that we are meeting the needs of the community with the context that exists at the time. As aforementioned in this presentation, ESER III funding can be utilized throughout, through the beginning of the 24-25 school year. Our creation of the ESER III plan will account for the strengths in our current programs, be focused around the programs and supports that have the largest impact on student performance, and be based in the current needs of students and the school community. The confluence of these factors will allow us to both create new interventions and build and modify our current systems to be more effective. Our first step in determining how to allocate this funding is to gather stakeholder input and the needs of our students and community. While this is a funding requirement, it also provides us the opportunity to hear from our community and ensure that they have a voice in the learning renewal process. As you can see from the diagram on the screen, Phase 1 of the outreach process includes engaging in meaningful conversation with our stakeholders. We have begun this process with our school staff in anticipation of the beginning of the school year, but will continue to regularly communicate and analyze our successes with each school-based staff. Beginning next week, we will also provide an opportunity for our community to provide feedback through a survey tool that will, that will be available on our district website. We will also communicate this feedback opportunity through our traditional communication means. We are hopeful that many of our community will visit the website, which contains information about ESER and specifically the ESER III funding and the potential uses and impact that they can have in District 211. In addition to our broad community, we are going to host student focus groups when the student returns in August to allow students a direct opportunity to speak into how we can most effectively meet their needs. In Phase 2, we will utilize the feedback from stakeholders on this diagram to create the actual budget and plan that will be posted on our district website for public review. Finally, in Phase 3, we will implement the plan over the course of the next three school years, maintaining a consistent and regular review of both our impact and our financial standing. We anticipate being able to complete the initial ESER III plan by late October after providing the opportunity for our student, staff, and community members to provide feedback. We are now happy to hear any feedback or questions that you may have regarding learning renewal and ESER funding in District 211.
Are there any questions?
Yes.
Please.
Thank you for the presentation. It was very informative. I have three things that, that kind of stood out. The after-school tutoring, explain how that works? Because obviously, as a parent with children in the district, I know that they're running from athletics to academics to extracurriculars, all of those things, so that after-school time that you're slating, and not only that, but our staff are also supporting extracurriculars, athletics, you know, those kind of things. So, one, where do the tutors come from? And then how does that work with our schedule that we are, you know, currently overwhelmed with?
Sure. It's a great question. So currently, we have after-school tutoring opportunities that are available at every school. And typically, they're available from the end of the school day to about an hour and a half to two hours after the school day, and they correspond with the activity and athletic busing, so that students can participate in the tutoring but also have transportation home. So with ESER, what we're looking at is how do we expand those opportunities so that students, exactly who you were describing, they may be involved in a sport or activity, they may be involved in something else after school, how can they still have access? And so after-school for us is no longer constrained to the one and a half to two-hour period. It now potentially becomes later in the evening as well. And it potentially is in-person or could potentially be remote. Part of the, the beauty of the ESER III plan is that we want to go to our students within these focus groups and say to them, "When do you need this? When would you use this?" Right? We don't want to make it an adult-centric thing where we say, "This is when you have to come." And so whatever they tell us they're going to use, we want to provide that opportunity to them. And the opportunity comes through District 211 staff, who would sign up and elect to participate in those. Then, the other beauty about it, I guess, is the continual refinement, right? Because what we don't want to do is hear that feedback, put in place alternative or different hours, right? So let's say Saturday morning. If that's not utilized, we don't want to continue Saturday mornings if it's not going to work. And so we have this process that every few months we can say, "Okay, what's the impact of this?" And that's really, that's really been the driving force of the money we've used so far, is, is what is the impact? And if it's there, let's take a look, like we did with summer remediation this year. Let's make it better. Let's take all the pieces that worked, and then let's put those new pieces that we've learned from in. And this allows us to do that.
Okay. Thank you. The next point, you had mentioned home visits. With all of our students returning to in-person, when are you showing up at their house?
Well, I hope that 100% return in person. And they're all there on the first day, and we have amazing attendance. But in the back of my mind, I'm, I always like to plan for, "What if we don't have 100% attendance on that first day? What if we have students that have not been engaged in school for, not what if, we do have students that have not been engaged for 17 months? And there's going to be a barrier to them walking into that building and thinking that things are just going to be the same." And so what we are predicting is that we are going to need much more human resources and human capital to go and talk with those students and figure out what is keeping them from walking into school. And that's not going to be easy conversations, and those aren't going to be easy barriers to overcome. So the hope is, we're not going to wait for them to come to us. We're not going to simply pick up the phone and call. We're going to go there, we're going to sit with them. We're going to do the things that we learned last summer, work for the students that are the most vulnerable. So if we don't have to use it, great.
So then, so then that's really to capture truancy then, is, is the, the way I understand that?
I'm going to, I'm going to call it support and helping students. You can call it that.
Okay. Thank you. And then can you clarify with regard to the survey that'll be posted on the website, the definition of community? Will that be just the people that touch the schools? Or are you looking for an open feedback from everyone, from seniors down?
It's an open forum.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you.
I have some questions. Thanks for the presentation. So I'm curious about, the first time, so last summer, when you're talking about the program, we needed to hire 40 teachers. I was wondering if those were internal hires or if they were external or a mixture of both?
Internal.
Okay. And, you know, one of the things that you said is that you took a look at all the pieces that worked really well, and you expanded on those for this summer. What are some examples of like the modifications that you made to the program for this second rollout?
Sure. So I would say, one, one major one was, Ms. Napier showed you the pictures of, right, setting up a chair and a table in someone's driveway. That didn't happen right away, right? Because when we started, we have these traditional means. We're going to make a phone call, we're going to send an email, we're going to send a second email, we're going to send a third email. And we did that because that was what we knew, right? But then we also had amazing people on this team that kind of said, "Okay, what aren't we trying? What could we try?" And they had the ability to do that. And so pulling up with a table and chair, if you're a kid who doesn't even want to engage and there's a teacher sitting out in your driveway that has set that up, it's really hard not to come out, even for the most disengaged student. And so we looked at that and we said, "We're not going to send the phone call, we're not going to send the email. We're going to bring the table right away." And really, what we've seen this summer is, our success rate is, right now, is significantly higher at this point in the summer than it has been. And so learning what works, learning what the impact was last year, and just saying, "We're going there right away," is, I think, a model and a cycle that we're seeing in all of the interventions that we're able to use here.
Okay. So, you know, when we're talking about the plans of, you know, creating new resources and expanding on resources we currently have, how are we making sure that those resources are equitably distributed among our different schools?
Yeah, it's a great question. Equity is certainly a hot topic. And so within our teams and within the, the meaningful conversations, which is the state term, but it's a good term for what's happening, right? Is, the conversation goes towards equity. Because what we're, what we're trying to do, as you know, is we see everything through the lens of equity. So as an example, and this is just an example, it may not be the ultimate piece that comes out of this, is, are, is there a District 211 school that potentially may need more social workers than another District 211 school? And that's likely going to be based on the number of disengaged students that we have at the beginning of the year. And so when we have a social-emotional program in place that says, "We're going to hire additional social workers," what the goal is, is, we're not going to just hire them and put them in a school. We're going to hire them in a way that we can transition them between schools if it's necessary to do that. And so we want to really create this fluid, fluid system of putting the human resources where they're most needed.
And I'm assuming that when we get a detail, more detailed version of the plan as it develops, those are the sorts of things that will be included, right, we'll be able to see? You kind of covered, my next question was, are we planning on hiring more student support staff? It sounds like that is the case. I know that, you know, the issue with the funding is, of course, that every district has gotten funding, and it's earmarks being what they are, we're all going to be competing from the same pond. Essentially, we're all going to be fishing from the same pond, so. But thank you for that. And then my last question is, you, you mentioned that students are going to be one of the stakeholder groups. We're going to do focus groups. And I'm wondering if the process has been developed for how, how students are going to be able to join those groups? I mean, is there going to be kind of just an open invitation? I mean, what are the, what are the processes in place if there are any at this point?
Sure. So we're tentatively looking at having, following kind of a, the research-based evidence of creating a focus group. So within the size of eight to 12 students in, in the conversation, getting a diverse representation of the student body within that, potentially hosting a day of focus groups so that it's not just during one period of the day where a student has a certain course they couldn't come out. And then doing both, the open invitation to participate in this if you're interested, and also then allowing the school staff to say to a student, "I really think you should be the one that talks in this. I really think you, you should have a voice in what this is." So allowing the student choice piece, but also allowing our educators to build into students by recommending them for that.
I'm sorry, I know that was my last question, but what you just said, I just have one more follow-up. So there's nothing to stop students from filling out this, you know, the, the survey that's going to be coming out. Do we know how long that survey is going to be available to people?
We're hoping to go a month.
I'm sorry?
One month.
A month.
We're hoping to open it up for a month. And that timeline is so that we can create, create and craft the plan in October and then bring it back to both you and the community. Because we, we are going to publish that plan publicly, and it's going to say where the money goes.
I know our students, you know, just like all of us, we get a lot of emails. They're going to get notification, right, of that survey as well.
And we're not just going to use email, we're going to use other methods of it, so.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I have a few, if you don't mind. First of all, thank you guys very much for the presentation. I thought that was great. My first few questions are going to go back to Page 5 where you talked about training. In that training, will any of the police consultants be part of any of that training? Or will it be up to their individual departments to give that additional training?
So in 5, the training was, I was simply talking about it as a category. The training that we've done in the past was really focused on the teaching methods for hybrid in-person and remote, because that's really the, the phase and context we're in. We haven't necessarily developed all the training, so I think that's a great opportunity that you mentioned. Because of the focus on social-emotional is to include all of our staff, including the police consultants, in those pieces of it. So certainly an option.
And then underneath, you talked a little bit about the mental health, and you broke it down into two components, the human and the system. And what type of systems are in place as it relates to the mental health?
Sure. So I would say, current in-place systems would be the systems that each school uses to identify a student that's in crisis and then ensure that that student, while they're directly in crisis, gets to someone that they can speak to that can handle that crisis. And so each school has, I don't know what every school calls it. I know that when we're at Hoffman, we, we call that our in, in-school or out-of-school emergency plan. What happens when a student comes to you with a crisis in school? And that involves not letting them out of your sight and making sure that you walk them to where they need to go. The out-of-school crisis is, you get an email or a phone call or some notification that something is happening. What do you do then? And so those systems are in place in each school. But also, we have the opportunity with Panorama to put in an additional system, which I think is going to be helpful because it's not based on a student necessarily reaching out directly or somebody noticing. It's a series of opportunities for check-ins, and it's a series of opportunities for a student to anonymously say, "I'm not okay. I want to talk to somebody," right? And they may not come out and say that to your face or my face, but they could mark that down on a survey. And we have the tracking ability then through Panorama to immediately identify the students who are, who are saying that or who are reaching out through that, and then getting them the help that they're desiring.
Thank you. And that kind of leads into my other question on Presentation 20, or Slide 20. Does the Panorama, I know it's fairly new, does it have the ability to reach out to the students that have already came out for help and go back and offer more support at this time?
I don't, I can't answer that question directly because I do not know. I know, I don't, I can't answer. I can find out, but I'm not sure right at this moment.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Interesting presentation. The, the senior on track program, can you quantify how many seniors were not on track? And how many are on track who are going to graduate because of the summer program?
We have approximately 62, or 78 individual students, seniors, who are potential graduates that are getting additional support. And at this point, I think only three of those possibly will not reach for different reasons, including lack of refusal of participation, hospitalization, some things that are out of that student's control. So it, that has been proven to be extremely successful because of the constant outreach and creativity of getting those students through.
I'm surprised by the low number of, of students that had to have remediation to graduate. And that's, that's a very good success rate. The, the plus-up of the staff, there's, there's no question it's needed now. I don't know if it's needed in perpetuity. You know, so that's some ramifications. If you hire more teachers, they're tenured, you know, what happens there? And then what happens when federal funding runs out? Who's going to pay for it?
Sure. So the positions that we're hiring are, we are clear in the, we are going to be clear, I should say.
I, I can't understand what you're saying.
When we hire these positions, it's going to be clear that they are, I don't want to use the word a temporary position because we haven't landed on what that term is, but the positions are coming through grant funding. And when that grant funding is finalized and done, then those positions don't exist anymore.
We can do that without the union complaining?
Yes. The, that's part of the contract that the new person signs along the way. We are very clear with the schools. It is very exciting to the schools to be able to be creative and, and do things that they, they probably never had to do before, but can do because the funding is there. Sometimes we have to be like the, the, the reality voice and say, "Yes, remember, this is temporary." Because this, this is an excellent resource for us from the federal and state government, but it is temporary and it will disappear.
Temporary sometimes becomes permanent, so I hope we, we, we stick with that. Temporary sometimes becomes permanent, so I hope we, we, we stick with that. The uh.
The money is not.
Right, I understand it.
It will disappear.
But, you know, things change and contracts are going to be renegotiated and that sort of stuff. So, you know, it, at one point in time, we're out of federal money and then we start spending tax, you know, property tax money. The, the, the ERISA, I guess, for the, for lack, are you going to provide some sort of segregated report apart from the current financial reports that we have for how, dollar for dollar, how, how the federal money is being spent?
We can. Ms. Peterson had the slide of how the CARES is spent so far. We have not touched the S R two so far, so we're happy to bring those back to you.
Yeah, I'd be interested. I mean, I think it's valuable, as stewards of taxpayer money, to understand where the money is being spent. I, I don't doubt that you're going to spend it judiciously, but I think we need to, to have that.
The ISBE has a very stringent plan that actually has to be sent to them also. So, we can share it in that format would be the most efficient way to share it.
I don't think the board needs a line item by line item, but, you know, maybe a roll-up.
That's what we do with the ISBE, line item by line item.
If you want to give it to, line item by line item, that, that's fine. I appreciate your responses in, in the presentation. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. I thank you very much. It was an excellent presentation, and I look forward to the activity that's going to be taking place. I have been asked if we can take a short break, maybe about five minutes, for the board, and we will reconvene in just five minutes. Thank you.
Great.
Gentlemen, we're back to our board meeting. All right, ladies, gentlemen. Our next item on the agenda is the consent agenda items. Are there any items, excuse me, thank you. Are there any items that a board member would like to have removed from the consent agenda?
Yeah, as per my earlier email to you, yes, yes, I do. Just one of them, the, the, one of the financials.
Which, which?
The, the financial, the financial report.
D. Letter D, the financial report?
Uh, sure. Sure. Look, I'm, I'm, can I continue or do you?
Well, is, do you want any others removed?
No, that's fine.
All right. If there's no others, then the recommended action is that the consent agenda be approved, and it includes the July fifteenth Board of Education meeting, the approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of June seventeenth, the approval of bills for payment, the investment report, the variance report, student activities report, and the resolution authorizing interventions on the proceedings before the State Property Tax Appeal Board, and the personal recommend, personnel recommendations. May I have a motion, please?
There's, there's more.
Which one did I miss? Change, oh, sorry. Oh, the annual review of the safety plans and protocols procedure, letter K, resolution of hazardous transportation areas, letter L, resolution employment of summer school teachers, and letter M, acceptance of donations. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. And the next item.
Point, point of order. How is a here vote recorded? Is that a yes or a no?
I beg your pardon?
How is a here vote recorded? Is that a yes or a no? Mr. Bradley voted here.
Yeah, it was under a roll call, so, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. The next item is the financial report as of June thirtieth, 2021. Would someone like to make a motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I could, I've got about twenty questions here on the financials. I want to, I want to do that at, at a later time, but I do want to, want to discuss rethinking, disestablishing the financial committee, okay? Here are some, the, the, based on the financials, where we're at right now, around a thirty million dollar surplus and growing, there, there are many implications going forward. The effect on the budget, okay, the future budget. We're not, we're not going to get that, that forgiveness for the abatement, that is not going to happen. We're, you know, with the, the, the bill, the bill that was there, to, to excuse or, or limit the rollback, that is not going to happen. That's been tabled.
I'd like to call a point of order, point of order.
I'm not finished.
Point of order.
Mr. Kramer, are, do you have any comments or questions about the financial report that Ms. Hummel can address if you have questions?
I would like to reinstate the budget and finance committee.
Point of order, that is not at this item.
Correct, that is not at this item. Please ask your questions in regards to the financial report.
What I would like to do is poll, per your comments at the last board meeting, I would like to poll the board to, to convene a special board meeting in September to discuss the financials.
But we have the presentation, we've got presentations tonight, we have future presentations at, at our regular meeting.
Wouldn't this be under potential topics for future discussion?
Okay, the, the nuances here, Mrs. Cavill, is that it takes four people to vote to approve a future discussion item, it takes three to convene a special board meeting.
Okay. Mr. Kramer, again, do you have any questions directed to the financial report?
What, what is the, what is our current operating, what is our current surplus in percentage?
Our current, our current surplus is nine million dollars.
Percentage wise of, of the budget?
Well, nine of a two-hundred-and-sixty-million-dollar expenditure budget. Our operating fund balance last year, and as I mentioned in our last meeting, it's measured as of June thirtieth each year. That is done on our audited figures, but last year was forty-one percent. I anticipate that it will be roughly forty-six percent with the additional surplus.
So, our fund balance is going to be forty-four percent, which is about a third or almost fifth percent more than the, than the board, thirty-three percent. Is that correct?
The board's minimum target, yes, is thirty-three percent. Of that fund balance, the additional fund balance that I'm referencing, is the seventeen million dollars for which the board has yet to had a, a final determination on how to use those proceeds.
That's part of the surplus.
It is.
Okay. What, the financial report is, it's an accrual basis, can you explain accrual, please?
Sure. So, the, during the audit process, any of the expenditures that take place in a period following are accrued back to that fiscal year, so it is the final figures that are, are reported at, at that point. So, an example may be an invoice that comes in for a capital item that is received, but it's not paid until those items are accrued back into the, the appropriate fiscal year.
So, in the financial report, there are, there are accounts receivable, and there are also payments due, future payments due, is that correct?
All of that accounting would be done in our financial statements that are provided in the audit, yes.
Okay, but are they included in the numbers provided in this financial statement?
No, this is on a cash basis.
Pardon me?
The numbers provided before you tonight are reported on a cash basis.
Okay, so, the, the email that you sent, fund, fund balance is calculated on accrual basis, that is incorrect for, for.
Oh, no, the fund balance is calculated on an accrual basis, that is correct. The financial statements that are provided to the board on a monthly basis are on a cash basis. And then, once our fiscal year is completed, our auditors are out and complete our paperwork and the.
So, we can link the financial report to, to the variance report, because both of those on paper are, are on a cash basis rather than one on.
Yes, and they, they are close. But the final numbers are presented to the board with the operating fund balance in December, once the audit is complete.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? If not, may I have a roll call, please? Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is the Freedom of Information Act, that's information. Next is the Tentative Budget Transportation Fund. It's an information item. Are there any questions in regards to that?
Yes, I have a few. The final balance in the transportation fund for the budget year, is that intended to remain at seven million, or is there a planned transfer into the O and M fund?
There is not a planned transfer into the O and M fund that, for the summer 2021 projects. The board has not discussed any projects that would take place next spring or summer for the summer 22 projects. This year, the transfer that was made was out of the working cash fund into the operations and maintenance fund.
Okay. So, with the seven million fund balance, we finished last year at five, what would be the district fund balance projected for that budget?
For the transportation fund?
No, no, inclusive of the transportation fund, what would our overall fund balance be? Would it, would it be beyond the adequacy funding level of one-ten? What are we targeting?
It's two separate pieces. The fund balance, so the fund balance is what I just referenced, forty-one percent, what they anticipated, forty-six percent by year end.
Right.
The forty-six percent includes, again, the land sale proceeds. Adequacy percent, we are at a hundred and seven percent. There is not a way to accurately estimate that. We called the state to see when that would be released, and it's in August.
For the twenty-one?
Yes.
Okay, because twenty, we were at one-hundred-and-seven-point-three.
Correct.
Okay. And so, the, the funding formula is there, we just, we don't utilize it in our projections at this point.
The funding formula is there, but what happens is.
It fluctuates based on other districts and allocation and equity redistribution throughout the state, right? And that's a small percentage, but we could eliminate that in theory, based on how they're weighed, because certain portions of that equation are weighed heavier than others, such as what our reserve balance would be.
We directly asked the state, is there any way for us to anticipate what our funding level is? They said no.
But we could rebuild the equation for our own purposes. I mean, it's public data and it's.
Yes, but we're one of eight hundred districts, so we, it would, we would not have those other figures.
I understand. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. The next item for information is the District 211 mission and value statements. And the reason that this is up here is because last month, the board voted on the board protocols and agreements, which really define how we work with one another and the administration to effectively govern the school district. And that includes our obligation as, to one another to be open, honest, and respectful of the differences in opinions or perspectives. So, during the closed session with the IASB representative, she reminded board members that the mission and value statements should be used to direct the actions of the school board. And she did ask us about ours, and I don't think we were able to answer that at the moment. So, there are the, our mission statement and, and our value statements, and also, they show up in the calendar, so all of the students and the parents have them. So, that's the reason that that was included in there. And I believe that it's really important that our value statements are in harmony with a lot of the actions that were just presented in the ESSA, ESSR presentation we heard, and also lead us into our strategic planning going forward.
I, I think it should be important to note that a lot of the elements of our value statements came from our last five-year strategic planning process and a lot of the survey data that was collected at that time from the community. And, and that's how they were developed. It wasn't a room full of four people, just kind of making things up.
And that's an excellent point, because that's one of the things that's important to us, is having that community input and also the student input. Okay, the next item is the new business, the updated safety protocols and mask guidance for schools. The recommended action is that the Board of Education accept the safety protocols as presented and direct the superintendent to implement these protocols, as may be modified in the future to conform to the requirements of or guidance by the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education, and in consultation with the local health department, except that changes to mask requirements or in-person learning due to COVID-19-related issues may only be made by board action unless otherwise required by law. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I'm more than happy to start this discussion. Last meeting, we discussed keeping this directly focused to the masks. Now, we're looking at a motion that has a whole bunch of protocols tagged on the back of it. After our experience with the resolution last year related to hybrid, in-person, all the fluctuations, I'm really reluctant to have a motion that has all of these protocols kind of hitched on the back end of it with some open-ended opportunity for variation. I personally would rather see a motion strictly focused on just the topic of the masks, without any other direction at this time, and then phasing in discussion about testing, discussions about some of the other issues with, with busing and the practicalities of enforcing that. I mean, the CDC is not going to be on the bus with our bus drivers if one of the students decide to take their mask off, and then the bus driver's stuck trying to figure out, do I pull over and kick the kid off the bus? Do I go to the school and then call for support? And all of the processes associated with trying to implement and enforce something that, to me, there's nothing magical about our school buses that all of a sudden they're giant incubators.
Possibly. Dr. Small, would you like to address the information that you've presented to us, maybe before we have more discussion?
Absolutely.
Please.
So, on July ninth, the CDC put out their guidelines. The Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education reacted to those guidelines and adopted them. That is why they are presented to the board tonight, because they are the most recent protocols, of which the board really does need to act to and act on, so that we can start preparing for the school year. The way they have been presented tonight is in line with the CDC slash IDPH guidelines. The, I can go through each and every one with these. In terms of the bus, yes, the CDC has made a statement, and the ISB and IDPH have followed that. In terms of the guidelines from the CDC, that masks must be worn on bus, our buses, this is an order that has come from the CDC, that says that wearing face masks while on conveyances and at transportation hubs is in place. Doesn't mean it will remain in place, but at this point it is. The ISBE has been very clear that that order is the one place where masks must be worn. In terms of the rest of the masks indications that are on here, the CDC has recommended that unvaccinated individuals do wear masks. It is not required. Therefore, that's what the recommendation is on here, is that if you look at the handout that is called Updated 2021/2022 School Year Safety Protocols, and you look at number three, District 2, 211 recommends that all unvaccinated individuals wear masks while in school, and the individual is welcome to wear a mask on school. It is not a must. The only must is with the CDC order in which all individuals, including the bus driver, are to wear masks on school buses or other school-related transportation. Our bus drivers do encounter situations on their buses. That is not unusual. Whether it be students not getting along, whether it be students standing and refusing to sit down, part of what they're trained is, is to assess the issue. Is it a safety issue in which they need to pull over and call for support? Or is it an issue that they just need to get to school and have an administrator support them? Or is it an issue that they never left to stop at the first place and call for support along the way?
Currently, the students wear masks on the bus.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Questions?
So, I have some comments. A lot has happened since our last board meeting, a lot. And one thing that has happened is, as recent as this morning, I attended a webinar. And one thing that has happened is as recent as this morning, I attended a webinar. I am our liaison to EdRed. And EdRed, in collaboration with Robbins Schwarz, held a webinar entitled Return to School. And in that webinar, they spoke about, there were legal counsels speaking to over 400 people on this webinar regarding return-to-school protocols. And so I'm going to mention, rather than wait until my EdRed update, because it's pertinent to what we're talking about here, I'm going to mention, I'm not going to, with regards to these items, say my personal thoughts on those items, but I am going to mention for the board's edification, the information that was conveyed during that webinar. So these are, like, bullet items for our information. The considerations that we make need to take into account community transmission levels, local vaccine coverage, screening and testing, and occurrences of outbreaks. Those are the data points that legal counsel is recommending. Requests for proof of vaccinations is permitted. We can ask to actually see cards if we so choose. If we keep those cards on file, they need to be properly stored as medical records under legal regulation. If someone refuses to prove that they are vaccinated, then we have the legal right, not that we may choose it or not, but we have the legal right to treat that person as unvaccinated. Regarding masking...
All right, please, could you please let him finish? Please let him finish.
Regarding masking and vaccination, they also spoke that antibodies are not, are not a determination for whether or not someone could get COVID. That the antibodies are still under determination as to how long they can help someone avoid being infected.
Please.
Not...
Please.
Not violating, that to share vaccination information is not a violation of HIPAA regulations. And it's also not a violation to share student vaccination information with our teachers. It is not a violation of HIPAA to ask for proof of vaccination. It does not, it does not indicate, it does indicate how to store that information, is found under the HIPAA regulation. We cannot compel someone to be vaccinated, but we, if someone refuses to share that information, we can treat them as not vaccinated. Transportation, masks are required, as you had mentioned. The importance is confirming what data and sources we're using to make our decisions. It's extremely important that school districts do that. One thing that they did mention also, and this is my last bullet, is that one question that was asked was regarding sharing teacher vaccination information with students and/or the public, and that that is considered employee information, and that, and that we are not...
Please, ladies, gentlemen. Ladies, ladies, ladies and gentlemen, please.
And that per legal counsel, we are not obligated to share that information. So that was, that was the information that was shared.
If you...
I can address, I can address some of the comments that Mr. Rosenbloom made. There have been multiple information sessions going on by attorneys, and certainly, some of the information that you have said has been spoken to by other law firms. All of what you said is certainly not in my plan, but it is information that you have brought forth for the board from that particular meeting as the EdRed representative. In this plan in front, that is in front of you right now, there is no requirement of vaccine. There's no requirement to produce a vaccination record. There is no requirement to put that on there. It follows, the plan that is on here follows the CDC guidelines that the IDPH has fully adopted. Even though, and I will qualify this, the IDPH has not put out any other additional details, but this allows us to start moving forward with plans. So for example, if I may, I can, in-person learning, certainly, we are all set for in-person learning. We will return to that, as with our master schedule has been done that way, and we will be using our lockers and our locker rooms again. The vaccinations, we have held three vaccination clinics on-site. We list vaccination availability for our parents. Should anyone need assistance scheduling, we are able to do that. We are not requiring vaccinations, nor are we requiring parents or employees at this point to show us whether they're vaccinated or not. The masks on busing, we have already discussed that. In terms of masks in general, I spoke to that also. Physical distancing, the CDC recommends that we remain at least six feet whenever possible indoors. We are able to put our desks apart three feet and still maintain our normal scheduling within our building. Our eating areas has been our challenge, and we have spoken to this many times. We can set up eating areas that are three feet apart, as well as have six-foot areas should students choose who want to be in a six-foot area when they eat. The layers of prevention, these are the layers that the CDC speaks to in order to keep schools safe and open, one of which is the screening. District 211 currently does offer the ByNextNow COVID-19 test as an optional test for our students, with parent consent, of course, and/or our staff. The ByNextNow is provided free of charge from the Cook County Department of Public Health in partnership with the IDPH. The S.H.I.E.L.D. Illinois test, we are halfway through the agreement of that, to bring that online for District 211. It would be an optional screening test for employees or parents who would like to have their child screened on a regular basis. This is a saliva test, where you spit into a small vial, and then that gets sent off with results coming back within 24 hours. Currently, the CDC does not recommend that the screening tests be used by people who are vaccinated, but it would be an option for any one of our parents, for their children, or employees. Other layers that the CDC indicated is important are also on here. Our ventilation systems, which Ms. Hummel has been working very diligently with our O and M staff to make sure that we have the proper airflow, the frequency, and the type of filters that are in there. We have that, had that ready at the start of last year and have also gone through the same process for the start of this year. Seems very basic, but it is part of what the CDC said. Our bathrooms are open and available use for hand washing, and hand sanitizer is available for anybody who wants to use it. In terms of the screening, we currently use a self-screener. And there's some confusion around this, so I'd like to clarify it. There is screening that can happen at school, and there's self-screening. The only screening District 211 has ever done at school is the temperature screening. We stopped doing that in May. We continue to do self-screening. The self-screening means that the individual says what states whether they have symptoms or they don't have symptoms. We currently use an online system for that, referencing what you talked about, Mr. Rosenbloom, in terms of the transmission rate, the health of our community. Our community is very, very healthy right now. And the self, the self-screener that I'm suggesting here is that we send reminders to our parents and our employees every six weeks. We would tie it to the grade reports that come, that have the current, the most current information from the IDPH as to symptoms of COVID, that we would send that, those every six weeks, so that parents and individuals can self-certify before they leave. We would not have to implement the use of the daily screener at that point, based on the, the health of our environment and our communities surrounding us. We would certainly send updates if anything changed, so that our parents knew what the, if there were different symptoms for identifying COVID. We will follow our daily cleaning and disinfecting using the recommended disinfectant products. We have been using those products all through this year and will continue using them. In number six for illness, it is still recommended that anyone who is sick does not come to school. There's a component from the CDC regarding children under the age of 12, which certainly is not our major population, but we do have younger children and preschoolers that come into our schools throughout our day to work with our students and our family and consumer science departments. In terms of the prevention strategies, we are currently at a very low community transmission level. And those are the types of things that are the discussions with the Cook County Department of Health that we have weekly, in terms of making sure that we're making decisions that keep us healthy and operating the way we expect to operate. Our COVID-19 dashboard will remain in place, which allows every parent or individual to see our positive cases and/or symptoms, so that they can track and make decisions for their child in terms of what's going on. And at the end of this, I reference exactly what the attorney said to you, Mr. Rosenbloom, in that in partnership with our local health department, we monitor the community transmission, school transmission, local vaccine coverage, and screening test results for recommended changes of any of the layers of mitigations. So the layers that I'm presenting you today are the layers that coincide with the CDC, the IDPH, and the ISBE at this time.
Thank you. As I had said before, you're going through these protocols and guidelines and recommendations. The information that I shared was information that I received from the webinar, not whether or not I agreed with any of it. It was strictly informational, so I wanted to make that very clear.
I do have a question about quarantine. If someone does come down with COVID, what's the guidelines for quarantine?
So the district, we do not quarantine, the local health department quarantines. And currently, the quarantine is typically 10 days, but there are different ranges, depending on whether you're adults, when your symptoms started, but it's typically 10 days. And then, Mr. Schumacher touched on the supports that we have ready should a student need to be at home, and how we can provide private tutoring for them to make sure when they return, they're right back where they need to be.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
You know, I think what the community wants is clarity, okay? The document that you presented provides some guidance, some, some plans, but I think, I'm confused, I don't really know, it's not black or white, you know? Like, for example, item three, would a simplification of that be masks are optional?
The implementation is that masks are optional.
Okay, thank you.
And that's, it's the CDC recommends that they're wearing, but it is not mandated.
That verb isn't there, and I think community wants clarity, it is now there, but...
I can't hear anything that you've said because of the noise.
Thank you very much.
Please, ladies and gentlemen, please be patient.
Thank you very much for that clarification, I think that's what the community needs, that they want. And now, the administration is on record that masks are optional. The, with respect to quarantine, that was also a question, you talked, it's somewhat, somewhere in the document here, Mrs. Klimkowitz talked about an example of a student contracting COVID, who quarantines. I would like to understand what the protocol is and the process for someone who comes in contact with someone who may or may not have COVID.
I can, I can speak to that, but that is not a District 211, we have nothing to do with that. That is the local health department. We don't quarantine kids, they do.
Okay, so I, maybe, maybe, maybe I misunderstood. I understood, I thought that during the past school year, if a student was found to have been in close contact with someone who may or may not have had quarantine, that that student had to not come to school for 10 days or take a test.
And that was by the local health department.
Okay, so how did, how did that work? Did we go to the local health department and say, okay, and then they said, you gotta do this?
That's correct, and they give the letter of release back.
Is that, is that still going to be effective, in effect?
As far as I know, they have not put out anything different.
So quarantine is still possible for someone who is reported to be, or have been with someone who may or may not have COVID? Is that correct?
Say it, say that again.
If a student, if it's reported or becomes known or questioned that a student has, may have had close contact...
Not may have, they have to have had close contact. So the student is, had close contact with someone who has COVID.
Who is positively identified.
That's correct.
That we are still going to quarantine?
It's not us, I know you like to say it's me, but it's not.
No, 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 no.
It's the, it's the local Cook County Department of Health.
You're playing ball with IDPH, I understand that. So that student will still be quarantined by...
The local health department.
By the local health department.
And the local health department releases them.
If the student has been vaccinated, will that student, will that student still be quarantined?
No, as long as they are symptom-free. That is the current, and that, again, that is not me, I'm telling you what the local health department currently follows.
And, you know, that, that clarity, I think, is necessary. Is, is daily health screening, symptom screening still going to be done online?
No, that's what I explained.
Okay, so that is no longer, so there's no more daily health screen online?
Not online, there's daily health screening, there's still self-daily health screening that we would ask people to do to not come to school sick.
And that is, that is going to continue?
Yes, we're going to continue to ask people not to come to school sick.
So they, so the students are going to have to complete the self-screening online?
No, no. They, the student, if the student's not feeling well, they don't come to school. They shouldn't show up at school, so it's a self-screening.
Not a formal...
It's not, maybe that's a good word to use. It's not a formal electronic screening.
Okay, so we're not using the iPads to say I have some... Okay, all right, I think, I don't know, that was not clear to me, and then...
Ladies, gentlemen, please. You need to be quiet.
Then I understand that we are not, the district is not going to require vaccine, vaccination reporting.
No.
Thank you very much.
I believe, I believe that the document that, that Dr. Small has presented to us does explain it and is fairly clear here on the implementation and the process and everything else that's covered. Any other questions?
If I can make a couple more comments. In terms of the motion that is on the table, some things that may happen. The CDC may change their order, as a matter of fact, on their website, they say, "At this time, it is still in place," which is an indication that it may change in the future. If that CDC guideline changes, the way that this motion is set up, I cannot instantaneously put into effect that we take masks off on the buses. We have to hold a special board meeting for that to happen. So I want to make sure that everybody's clear, that it goes both ways. You know, when it becomes less restrictive, I still don't have the power to put it in place. Becomes more restrictive, I don't have the power to put it in place, we will have to have a special board meeting to make that happen.
So if someone, the local health department, I guess that's IDPH or Cook County, if they say, "You gotta change what you're doing, we're becoming more restrictive," we have to call, you have to, a special board meeting has to be convened for the board to concur, approve, or whatever?
That is around mask usage and in-person learning.
Okay, and board council, the board is not involved in any other changes?
The other changes you would certainly be informed of, but if we have to change the disinfectant, I'm not going to call a board meeting to say that we have to change the disinfectant. Or, for example, let me pull up something else.
How about the, the point with vaccination proof? Because let's say the guidance from the IDPH is to request student vaccination proof. There would be no special meeting for that, correct?
Not in this particular motion, but I would...
Yeah, I'm uncomfortable with that.
We can add that in there.
Yeah, move to amend the motion. I move to amend the motion.
To, to what?
Okay, I'd like to, to add, after, after the word "law" at the end of the paragraph, remove the period, put in a comma, and include the words "or as reviewed by the BOE in October 2021."
So are you suggesting that if, if so chosen, we don't follow the law?
Mr. Rosenbloom, that is not what I said. All I'm asking for is, is something in, something in a motion to provide the ability for the board to review where we're at in October... ability for the board to review where we're at in October after this has all been rolled out and has been in operation.
I can bring you an update every month.
Okay, but I, I, I would like that to be a board action.
The, what's, what's the goal of this? I mean, if, if we get an update every month.
If there are changes to, to what, what's currently presented by the administration, I, I am recommending and advocating that that be approved again or reviewed in October of 2021 for, for subsequent or continuing board approval.
All right. Well, prior to, you know, making discussion here, is there a second to the amendment?
Not that verbiage, no. It makes no sense.
So there's no second to the amendment, so that doesn't go forward.
Mr. Dombrowski, can you suggest other?
I'm still, I'm still processing it. I, I'm not comfortable with putting the, the responsibility of some of these protocols because they're almost as significant, if not more significant, than the issue of masks. And to allow other protocols within here to be modified at the discretion of guidance that may be issued by these entities, which, again, the Illinois State Board of Education is in conflict with the executive order by the Governor of Illinois, Section 8. The Governor of Illinois, Section 8 of his executive order states that the ISBE shall remove all barriers to remote learning. The ISBE decides to say, hey, everybody's going to be in person in the fall. Those two things are in direct conflict. So in Springfield, they haven't resolved those issues and they haven't come into conformance with each other. So I have a hard time, you know, looking at this. You know, CDC starts playing with terminology and language. They say, hey, instead of the, the word quarantine, we're going to say isolation, right? So they leave the Department of Public Health to the, to the jurisdiction of doing quarantining, but then the CDC says that if the school has to isolate a person, similar to what Ms. Keller's comments were today, where she came into the school without a mask, and for an hour and a half, she was separated from her daughter and she was isolated. That conforms with CDC. I don't think that's really what our community expects. So on some of these issues, I, I don't have a problem implementing the protocols at this time. I have a problem with leaving it open-ended into the discretion of future guidance that may or may not make sense for us and our transmission rates.
I'm in agreement with you, and that, that was my purpose for, for amending the motion. Is there language that you can propose for an amendment?
I have a proposed amendment to the motion. I propose to add changes to proof of vaccination in here. When we have, if you read towards the end, it's about two-thirds of the way down, Illinois State Board of Education, and in consultation with the local health department, comma, accept that changes to masking requirements, perhaps the comma goes there, proof of vaccination. I'm open to whatever specific terminology other board members prefer, comma, or in-person learning due to COVID-19-related issues.
Can you please, I add that because I think that, I think that's an issue that should also, though I have complete faith in Dr. Small, and I have maintained through this whole period that it's important to follow Department of Public Health guidelines, you know, I think that adding in the, the issue of showing proof of vaccination should be a matter that automatically comes before the board, and I.
Listen to what I'm saying. Please, please allow her to speak.
What I'm saying, I'm saying that that shouldn't be left up to the superintendent. If there's a change to these guidelines, if the CDC or the Department for Public Health came out in August and said, actually, we, you are supposed to check for proof, I don't think that should be an automatic yes, and according to this motion, it is. So I'm saying it should come before a special board meeting, and you're still yelling at me because you won't listen.
All right. I can suggest vaccination.
Ladies and gentlemen, please, allow the board to have the discussion.
That's my proposed amendment.
I'm in agreement with you, Mrs. Cavill.
Changes to vaccination status requirements might be considered to be put in after the comma.
I was open to whatever language makes the most sense.
Okay, so what's, what are we adding? It's changes?
Why carve out any of the protocols? Just make them all, like, just a blanket statement.
No, I disagree with that.
I, I have to be able to move forward and then in minor changes, make minor changes to keep the district functioning.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you said there.
I said I have to be able to make minor changes as needed to keep the district functioning without constantly stopping, giving 48 hours notice to have a special board meeting to bring everybody together to talk about what disinfectant we're using.
Where does, where do we have the disinfectant?
Do you not have that ability now?
Annotation.
Do you have that ability now?
I do.
I, can I, can I make an amendment proposal as well, or do we have to first?
We don't have one on the table yet.
I'm trying to get the verbiage on, on the amendment. So it, it says, accept that changes.
What was the verbiage that you suggested, Dr. Small?
Accept that the changes to masking requirements, comma, vaccination status requirements, or in-person learning. Does everyone follow that? All right, do we have a second on the amendment?
I'll second it.
All right. Discussion on this, this amendment, then.
Superintendent Small, can, can you quantify or qualify what constitutes a small adjustment that you want the authority to have to make by yourself as opposed to what constitutes a major change?
Well, the major changes are listed in the motion right now.
Okay.
So that's vaccination, masking, in-person learning.
And may I ask what these changes, you're saying the changes are, but they're in changes to what? Relative to what is considered standard practice, but the authorization for the standard practice of following the CDC and all of those things expired with the June resolution last year, which ended at the 2021 year. So this is really a, a fresh authorization, not necessarily a change, correct?
It is a different authorization, yes.
Correct. It's not a change in something that's existing. This is a new authorization to proceed into the new school year. I just want to make sure I understand what we're being asked.
Yes, you're being asked to approve the protocols that I will put in place right now, based on what has been given to me by the CDC and approved by the IDPH and the ISBE.
In consultation with the district attorneys.
Yes. They have seen this.
And keeping in mind that, you know, it's a new school year, we're starting to hopefully get back to normal, the kids have been wearing masks. This would allow for those who wish to wear a mask, still be able to wear the mask, those who are not vaccinated, if they choose to wear a mask, we're not going to be asking for any vaccination records.
This time.
At this time. And, you know, we'll end up having to see what happens with CDC.
Dr. Small, not to excessively prolong the conversation, I just want to make sure that, you know, you've had, a big, important part of this has been your weekly conversations with the Department of Public Health. Is that ongoing?
Yes.
That's part of the monitoring?
I just spoke with them this morning.
Okay.
So anything that's not in this protocol, you're free to implement without authorization or direction from the board, correct?
There isn't anything else out there right now.
Right, but, but if, let's say you didn't put in the layers of prevention, that, that falls under standard operating procedure, cleaning, disinfecting.
No, the layers of prevention are actually mimicking the CDC guidelines.
I, I don't disagree, but if the board did not direct you with this motion, an approved item five, layers of profession, prevention, you would still have ventilation, hand washing, respiratory adequate, you know, staying at home when sick, contact tracing.
No, so the ventilation system has changed from what we standardly do. We changed it at the start, two years ago, or the start of the school year. The disinfectant we use now is not the disinfectant we used to use. We did not disinfect in the way that we do now. These are all new things. Kids came to sick, school, school sick all the time.
And so by approving this, or if, if we removed item five, you would go back to a different ventilation system, you would go back to a different sanitation item, and then you would allow sick kids in the door.
I'm not understanding what, can you tell me what the crux of your argument is?
I'm, I'm just saying that if, if we weren't to codify this, the practice would change in the operations.
But I feel like that's leading somewhere. Is it because you want each of these items to be its own stand, center, or are you saying that?
Yeah, I'm saying eliminating it allows the superintendent free rein to operate without our jurisprudence, if you will.
But it's not being eliminated. No one's proposed that, so I'm just not.
Well, that's why I'm trying to figure out if, if I make a motion to remove that, what's the impact?
Why would you remove it?
Because then the superintendent doesn't have their hands tied for that item by the board, and it falls under operation, and it's, it's within her purview to continue using whichever cleaner is determined to be the most effective.
And it already says that in the motion.
Like, what's the benefit?
But if you keep it in the motion and you decide to make a change to this, or the CDC makes a change to it, then it's got to be, it comes back to us, is what Dr. Small was saying.
The motion says she has the authority to make changes to number five. It says that. Because number five is not masking, it's not in-person learning, and it's not vaccination related. So she has the ability to make all the changes she wants to number five without coming to the board for approval.
But I'm not doing it willy-nilly. I'm following.
I know that.
Right, but, but my point is if it wasn't.
She doesn't have to come to us.
If it wasn't in there, she wouldn't have to come to us either.
I have a proposed amendment.
All right. And we've got a second on that. Any other discussion on the amendment? So the amendment would read, that, you're going to have to help me with this one, that the Board of Education accept the safety protocols as presented and direct the superintendent to implement these protocols as may be modified in the future to conform to the requirements of or guidance by the Illinois Department of Public Health and the Illinois State Board of Education, and in consultation with the local health department, accept that changes to masking requirements, comma, vaccination status requirements, or in-person learning due to COVID-19-related issues may only be made by board action unless otherwise required by law.
Okay.
May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, so now the motion before us is going to be exactly what we just read because now we're voting on the actual motion. That the Board of Education accept the safe, safety protocols as presented and direct the superintendent to implement these protocols as may be modified in the future to conform to the requirements of or guidance by the Illinois Department of Public Health and Illinois State Board of Education, and in consultation with the local health department, accept that changes to masking requirements, comma, vaccination status requirements, comma, or in-person learning due to COVID-related issues may only be made by board action unless otherwise required by law. Okay, any discussion on the motion?
Just one quick question. How does, how does item nine for monitoring get adjusted outside of the board purview?
This is, this is simply saying that the CDC is saying you need to monitor your community transmission, your vaccination coverage, whether you have screening testing available, and if there are outbreaks.
So.
That's what Mr. Rosenbloom was, was referencing.
Correct. So how, how would that change over time?
If suddenly the CDC and the IDPH were saying you don't pay attention to screening testing anymore.
Okay, and then how does, how does these protocols retire? Because these are, are these just for this school year?
I hope so.
Okay.
And it does say just for this school year.
Well, the motion doesn't say that, but.
The motion does not say that.
No, but the plan does say that. That's what you're, as you're.
The, the plan is for the school year?
Right.
Updated 2021 school year.
Yes, it's the safety protocols as presented.
That's, that's part of the document.
That's correct.
I, the, I didn't, I didn't know that, that the website was, the dashboard was, was that sophisticated, quite frankly. Well, where, where are you getting the data from for community transmission, vaccination coverage, optional screening, testing results, and outbreaks? Are you getting that from, from Cook County Department of Public Health? Are you getting it from Northwestern University?
No, it comes from the local health department. The only information that we have, that we collect, would be when we have positive cases where we're notified by the school. As a school, we know about it, and we're communicating with the local health department. That's when we put those items on the dashboard as well as the symptoms. So the, that's the only data that we actually have ourselves. Everything else comes from the local health department.
Which is Cook County Department of Public?
That's correct. Anything in here that says local health department is the Cook County Department of Public Health.
What is their definition of local? Is it Cook County-wide?
No, suburban Cook County.
Suburban Cook.
Sometimes they have, and some of their data, and then this is data in the past because they are all switching their data formats now. They have had, split the suburban Cook County into four quadrants. But I do not know what the new data will be from the Cook County Department of Public Health.
The reality is, is that what's going on in Homewood is not what's going on in Palatine. So there could be, the, the data could be skewed because of a very large outbreak, outbreak in, in Homewood, which is in southern Cook County.
Yeah, the outbreaks are local, that are our own outbreaks. Outbreaks, our own outbreaks within our schools.
No, I'm talking about the, the, the vaccination.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought you said outbreaks.
The vaccination rates and, and the positivity rates, for lack of a better word. Cook, suburban Cook County is not local. That's a big, big place. So, I mean, I, I'm glad that, that the information is there, but I'm very skeptical of its accuracy when all that I've read indicates that the decisions to modify or change or back, go backwards to, to, you know, to, to become more rigorous depend on local conditions. And the local conditions, I think, would be zip codes that, that the school district operates rather than some, you know, overarching Cook County, suburban Cook County-wide, which is, which is nebulous. I mean, I.
We do have the breakdown of our zip codes. We are such a large district that it is, it is a way to look at the data. It is not as beneficial to us as in other districts where there's high schools have maybe only one or two zip codes and they all go to that high school. We are, our zip codes overlap quite a bit.
I understand it, and I, I was going to send you the link. I've been looking at it for a year. Northwestern has a very accurate positivity rate where you can type in, you know, key in the number, the zip codes, okay? And I, some of the zip codes, like we, we encounter, I guess, a bit of Wheeling, a little bit of Barrington, it still gives you a, a closer and more accurate representation of what, of what is actually going on locally.
There, there are different opportunities to have data collection. The one I am presenting to you is from our local health department.
Right.
If the board directs me to look at other data sources, they would have to direct me to do that.
Who, who would have to direct you?
You would. If you want me to take Northwestern or other private data sources, you would have to tell me that that is what we should base our discussions upon.
I'm saying that, that, that suburban Cook County-wide data is not applicable to what's going on out here in Northwest Cook County.
So do you want to amend the motion?
No.
Okay, then.
I'll remain with what we've been doing, and the dashboard that's been providing the information, that's been currently available to everyone has been sufficient thus far, right?
No, that has not been sufficient.
What, what do you want done?
Positivity rates by, by zip code that, that are, that are, that are contingent or overlap with District 211. We know what zip codes there are.
And we're gathering information from our local health departments, which is our surrounding area. So that's, that's basically what we've been using then, correct?
It's, it's not our surrounding area. It goes down almost to the Indiana border.
The thing is, is that the motion is as it's presented, this was the discussion on the motion, so if you disagree with the monitoring, then you would, you know, I asked you if you were proposing an amendment, you said no.
No, no, I, 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 I'm trying to make a point that, that, that the data that we have is, is, is not entirely active.
I hear you.
Okay, then are we ready to vote?
I just want, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just want, I'm sorry. I just want to say one thing. I really appreciate the passion. I'm a passionate person, too. I appreciate the passion. I do not understand the outrage, because there's been a couple of topics, listening very carefully to public comments. You know, I don't remember any board member or a previous board meeting, anybody even suggesting that we were going to require proof of vaccination. I don't remember there being an agenda item to say we need, we're gonna compel everybody to wear a mask, regardless of what the guidelines, which has been the guiding principle by majority voter the last year, has said. And so I certainly understand feeling passionate about an issue, and I appreciate sharing that passion. I know, you know, this is democracy at work. It gets contentious sometimes. That's part of the fun. I appreciate the passion. I just don't really understand what sometimes feels like misinformation and outrage. I understand being yelled at as a board for things that we've legitimately done and discussed doing. It mystifies me sometimes when I'm being yelled at things that, like, at least I've never seriously considered. So I thank, I thank the passionate comments tonight. I do have a lot of respect for the fact that we all feel passionately about certain issues. I appreciate making the effort to stay this late at these board meetings and share your concerns. And I'm glad that we're at the point where now we can vote and provide clarity to our community, so.
Thank you. Roll call, please?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye, excuse me. Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Wait, I didn't hear. This is a vote.
This is the vote.
Yep.
I'm sorry, I thought I heard.
Mr. McGowan was aye.
This is the, so we voted on the amended, now we're voting to approve the amended.
That's correct.
Aye.
We already voted on that, so we're voting on the motion.
Right.
We're voting on the motion as amended, so that is the motion.
It is the motion.
Should we start over? So, okay, just, I am trying to recall, we had the motion in the second, we had the discussion.
Yes.
We issued the amended, voted.
Yes, and we read this again, and this is the amended motion. All right.
Okay, starting again.
Simorusti, would you start again, please?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Illinois Association of School Boards' annual membership. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education renew its membership in the Illinois Association of School Boards for 2021, 2022, and authorize the superintendent to pay the annual dues of $19,714.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion? Okay, if there's no discussion, roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the Education Research Development Legislative Renewal. The recommended action is that the Board of Education renew its membership in EdRed for the 2021, 2022 school year, and authorize the superintendent to pay annual dues of $5,000. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the Student Building Construction Program. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve construction of houses during the 2021, 2022 school year and 2022, 2023 school year on two district-owned lots. Further, that the following amounts be budgeted for those projects over the 2021, 2022, and 2022, 22, 23 fiscal years. Construction costs for the student-built home located in Palatine in the amount of $470,055, including consulting fees and contingency. And construction costs for the home located in Elgin in the amount of $167,471, including consulting fees and contingency. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
I should have, it didn't occur to me to ask this beforehand. I try to give questions beforehand. It's just, I know what the prices of building materials skyrocketing. Is that covered by the contingency? Any continued rise in building materials? Or, you know, if it goes way over budget, what happens?
Yes, good, good question. Excuse me. It does include, so the contingency would cover any overages that way. But we also have been able, since we had a year delay in the construction schedule for that Palatine home, on the Elgin home, we're really moving to the inside finishes where there's, the impact has been more of a delay in production versus the increased cost as much. But on the Palatine home with the delay, we've actually now been able to update all of our, our quotes from our service providers, from our vendors, and have built those in and feel comfortable with the budget number that's provided. We've been thankful to see that the cost of lumber is starting to come down and likewise. So we've postponed the purchases on some of those items as, to the extent possible, to take advantage of the lowering cost.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Yeah, it's an educational program. I don't expect to make money on it. I think that if there are cost overruns, I mean, I have to have some work done in my house, and I'm afraid to price it. I think that if you came back to the board, you would probably, it would probably, would probably be approved. You know, so what you have is okay for now. I don't know if it's gonna, if it's gonna cover what's gonna happen in the future. That's not gonna recover for a long time. You can't get tile, you can't get wood, you can't get screws, you can't get electricity. The addresses, are they public knowledge of where these are at?
I mean, we don't, I don't know that we advertise it, but we also don't hide it.
Well, okay, I mean, I, I mean, I didn't want to know if we want, you know, for whatever reason, we were keeping them. Could you, in the, I was disappointed that the address is, there's a Palatine, and there's a.
Elgin.
An Elgin house. I'd like to drive by it and see what they look like.
Sure, bring it to us.
I can tell you the streets right now. I don't have the specific address, and actually, I'm not certain whether we have the assigned address to the Michigan Avenue lot in Palatine.
When we know the address, maybe. Now, have we gotten comps in the area for other houses that are being sold or being built? I mean, what do you expect this one to sell for?
Well, the Elgin home, we built two very similar homes on the adjacent lots. So those are comps, although they are several years old at this point. I, I don't have the estimated sale value at this point. I can pull out. You know, we do work with our, some of our realtor contacts, just to run decisions by them, to say, is this something that the marketplace is looking to see? Where's the added value? You know, is there more value in this decision or that? And I can get updated information from them on those comps.
I'd be interested in that in the future when it comes down to selling. I mean, right now, the market is through the roof. I mean, people are, you know, if a house is priced at 300, people say I'll pay 350.
Yeah, and I think at the time when we built our budgets and had our estimates, it was at a time where I would not feel comfortable citing those numbers because things are so different.
It's fluid, it's gonna change. Okay, thank you very much.
Any other questions? If not, roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next item is the Student Photography Vendor. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the recommendation to select Life Touch for Student Photography Services for the 2021, 22, 2022, 2023, and 2023, 2024 school years. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Questions? From what I read, there were six possible vendors who were, we did an RFP or whatever for them. Three were chosen. Which six, which six vendors were chosen? Why were they chosen? How do, how do we come, how do we, how do we come about choosing those six possible vendors? And which three were finalists?
Lauren, can you speak to how we advertise it?
Absolutely. We have a list where people, companies can ask to be on our vendor list for a specific product. So we update that list every time we send out a better an RFP. That's how the original six were notified, because they had asked, they had either previously been on the list or had asked to be added to the list. But in addition to that, we also publish notice on our website, as well as run it in the Herald, so that people, if they are not on that list, they have the opportunity to submit a proposal.
I mean, the vendor that you're recommending is a pretty large one. Were there, did any smaller vendors, did they submit an RFP?
There, I would say two were similar in size. One was definitely smaller. I don't know what you mean by smaller, but it was smaller than the other two respondents.
Okay, so the requirement was that they would be able to handle all six or all seven of the schools, rather than two?
It was, yes.
Have we thought about piecemealing it?
The reason that we have packaged it the way that we have, and we, there's multiple reasons for that. One, we asked them to provide several services to us, including anything from student ID pictures to senior portrait packages. If you were to break that out by package, there are certainly packages that are more lucrative than others. And right now, it doesn't, there's not a fee associated with those services to the board. But however, if you were to break it out, and I'll just use student ID pictures as an example, there's an investment that's involved in that process, because they have to buy the equipment. There's work that goes behind that, where there would likely be a fee associated with that, because they're not making any money off of that. Likewise, there's discrepancies in volume across schools to where it wouldn't make sense to do it that way.
So a smaller vendor could not provide the value that a large vendor?
The number of events that we have taking place across our district, and the various types of events that may be happening from day to day, the providers, one of the things that we make sure is that they have the number of photographers to be able to cover all of the events, that they undergo training, that there's quality control, those types of issues.
Thank you.
Mr. Kramer, if it helps, I think we share an interest in this issue. Just to share informationally, I've been talking with Dr. Small about this as well, and learned some interesting things, that there are student photography clubs. Like, there are opportunities for students to take candid photos and participate in the process, too, which made me feel better about the fact that we're a large district, and we have to use these large vendors, that the students can still have opportunity to participate in the process. I know I participated in creating my yearbook, and it was a really valuable experience. And that's, we've had some public comments speaking to that as well. And Dr. Small has assured me, and I'm sharing them with you, that our students do have plentiful opportunities to participate in the process.
And I would assume those candid photos would be scrutinized?
Yes.
Thank you.
As best we can when we scrutinize thousands upon thousands of them, but yes.
And I'll just add some additional comments. I've had lengthy conversations with a member of our community, as well as Dr. Small and Mrs. Hummel, regarding this particular item on our agenda, the vendors involved, the reasoning and selection criteria, the process that was followed, the length of the contract, and several details within the packages and pricing offered to us. And I feel very satisfied from the conversations that I've had regarding them.
Any other discussion? If not, roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, that leads us to the next item, potential topics for future discussion. All right, if there's no topics, then it goes to committee reports. I have no NSSO report. EdRed?
I already said a little bit about EdRed from the webinar that I attended earlier today. Also, I want to mention, EdRed is kind of on vacation, along with the legislative body in Springfield. They have a, their annual kickoff luncheon is scheduled for September, and they're planning it being in-person. So I know they're very excited about that, because they haven't had an in-person function for quite some time. So that's the next activity around EdRed.
Okay, next item is the Student Wellness Report. Mr. McGowan, did you just say something in regards to it?
Sure, from, from what I've got up to date, is as a liaison, one of liaisons for the Student Wellness Committee, is that the administration is actively working specifically on the issue of the sexual assault and/or prevention. And it's something that the framework is kind of being built, and we're waiting till the school year starts, so we can appropriately address it with the help of, with the help of the students and the administration already. From what I believe to be true, teachers and students have already been contacted to volunteer for the committee and participated as well.
And there's still time for them to volunteer.
And it's still time, so.
It's not closed by any means.
Absolutely, so there's my update.
All right, thank you very much. Ms. Cavill, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything further?
No, I think Mr. McGowan covered it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to upcoming events and calendar items. You have that before you. Then the next item is is the release of the Closed Session Minutes from December 2020 through May 2021. The motion is that the Closed Session Minutes of December 10th, 2020, January 21, 2021, February 18th, 2021, March 18, 2021, April 8th, 2021, April 29, 2021, May 13th, 2021, and May 27, 2021, no longer require confidential treatment, and are to be approved and placed on file. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please? Oh, I'm sorry.
What happens to the tapes?
The tapes are kept for.
We have a policy on that, and then they're destroyed.
I think it's like 18 months.
I don't know it off the top of my head.
Will you forward us the policy for informational purposes?
Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next item is the Appointment, Employment, Discipline, Compensation, Performance, or Dismissal of Specific Employees, and we have retirement requests. The recommended motion is that the Board of Education accept the retirement request of Sally Simorusti, effective December 2021, consistent with the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. Chequise Gilbert, effective June 2025, consistent with the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. Charles Mays, effective June 2023, according to the master contract of the District 211 Operations Maintenance Group. Marjorie Lynn Priebel, effective December 2023, consistent with the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. Todd Romanowski, effective June 2023, according to the master contract of the District 211 Operations Maintenance Group. Raymond Rasmussen, effective June 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 Operations Maintenance Group. Anita C. Home, effective June 2025, consistent with the master contract of the District 211 Teachers Union. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? I would like to thank Sally Simorusti for all that she has provided to.
I second that. I second that motion.
You have been just amazing in providing us the information when we call. You're very receptive to us. You, you, you're just such warmth on the telephone. And you help guide us when we need the help. Sally, you are absolutely tremendous, and I cannot thank you enough for all of the support that you have provided to me over these years, and to all. that you have provided to me over these years and to, to, to all of our board members and to the administration here. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And with that, I guess we're gonna have to have a vote. So, um, if, if there's no other discussion, then may I have a roll call, please? Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom? Oh, dear.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
And, um, with no other informa, uh, um, nothing else coming before the Board of Education, this meeting is then adjourned.